I'd like to call to order the regu-- or, excuse me, the June 18th, 2019, regular formal meeting of the Iowa City City Council. Roll call, please.
Cole.
Here.
Ma'ams.
Here.
Saleh, Taylor.
Here.
Teague.
Here.
Thomas.
Here.
Throgmorton.
Here. Good evening, everybody. Welcome to your City Hall. It's nice to see all of you on what I guess has been a pretty decent day. I want to note that Councilwoman Saleh will not be able to be with us again tonight. She is still in Sudan, which is a very dangerous place at the moment. She and her children are trying to get on a flight to return to the United States and have not yet been able to schedule a flight, so... But she's planning to do that, and Kelly has been in communication with Maz about that, so we certainly hope she and they can come back safely. All right. Item two is proclamations. We have one proclamation to read tonight, and I think there's no one here to receive it, but I want to read it. Oh, you're going to? Okay, great. So, I'll-- let me read it first, and then you can come up and accept it, okay? So, proclamation: "Whereas Juneteenth, National Freedom Day, commemorates the day of June 19th, 1865, when Major General Gordon Granger led Union soldiers into Galveston, Texas, bringing news that the Civil War had ended and that the Emancipation Proclamation declared all slaves to be free. And whereas, in Texas and throughout the South, Juneteenth commemorations began on June 19th of each year, consisting of prayer services, inspirational speeches, readings of the Emancipation Proclamation, food, games, and dances. And whereas, in 1997, during the 105th U.S. Congress, House Joint Resolution 56 and Senate Joint Resolution 11 were passed officially recognizing Juneteenth as the Independence Day observance of Americans of African descent. And whereas, Juneteenth reflects our community's deep belief in liberty and equality for all individuals, as all benefit from a greater understanding and appreciation of the experiences of others. And whereas, Juneteenth celebrates the strength and resolve of African-Americans throughout our history and is an opportunity to honor African-American culture, art, history, and achievement. And whereas, Juneteenth will be commemorated on Saturday, June 22nd, 2019, from 12:00 p.m. to 4:00 p.m. in Mercer Park, 2701 Bradford Drive, Iowa City, Iowa, that will include games, community education on African-American history, as well as a health and wellness fair. Now, therefore, I, James A. Throgmorton, do hereby recognize Juneteenth, 2019, as Juneteenth National Freedom Day in Iowa City, and would encourage community members to attend the commemoration events being held on June 22nd to recognize this special day. So, come on up. Thank you. Feel free to say something. Thanks. Yeah. Please state your name. Oh, you're not going to say? Okay. All right. We can move on to item three, special presentations. And this one happens to concern Run Crandic. Come on up, Josh.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor. Council, I appreciate an opportunity to have a few minutes here just to thank all of you again, like we do every year. Well, the second year in a row now, for all the help the City of Iowa City provides for Run Crandic, this new corridor marathon, the first-ever marathon in the corridor, Iowa City-Cedar Rapids. Once again, we had a terrific turnout. We had people come in from 31 states and two countries to run the marathon this year, and we ended with some nice checks for the Cedar Rapids, Iowa City Community School districts, as well as some money for Prairie and Clerk Creek and Mannequin. So, this could not be possible, you know, goes without saying, without the public safety agencies of the entire corridor. We put on a lot of events, as you know, and it's certainly the most challenging to work with eight or nine different police departments and secondary roads teams and streets teams. There's really only one way you can get from one city to the other, and that's Highway 965, and so it takes a lot of coordination. So, we appreciate Jeff and his entire team, and Ashley and their leadership and support throughout all of this. It's really become a great event, and this year we had it easy. We just had to get them out of Johnson County. Next year, they'll finish back down here. So, as you know, I get more than my fair share of credit for some of these events. The person who really is responsible for making this possible, as many-- well, as many other things, is Monica Nievas, our Vice President of Special Events, and so I'd like to turn it over to her, just to present you with a little token of our appreciation to the City of Iowa City.
Hello. Thank you for allowing us to be here. On behalf of Think Iowa City, the Cedar Rapids Metro Economic Alliance, Corridor Running, the University of Iowa Community Credit Union, and the Run Crandic Executive Committee, I would like to thank the Iowa City City Council for their continued support of the Run Crandic Marathon. Thanks to your efforts, the Run Crandic Marathon had over 300 runners from over 30 states run across the Park Road Bridge on a Sunday morning in April. I'd especially like to thank Lindsay Kent, Jeff Sears, and Julie Johnson from the Parks and Rec Department. Additionally, I want to say another thank you to Derek Frank and Officer Ashton Hayes from the Iowa City Police Department, who ensured the safety of our runners, volunteers, and spectators along the course in Iowa City. Ashton not only attended all of our public safety meetings and coordinated the department's efforts, she also was our lead cyclist with the lead female runner that day. Run Crandic would not have been a success without the support of the City of Iowa City, and it's my pleasure to present the City and the Iowa City Police Department with finisher medals from 2019.
Wow.
Thank you very much.
Wow, very sweet. Are there any police officers in the room?
They left.
They dropped theirs off on the way back by.
Police department.
Yeah, there you go.
You can put that on if you want to. Oh, what fun. Y'all do great work, Josh. Keep it up. Thank you, Monica. Okay, let's turn to items four through nine, which is the consent calendar. And could I have a motion to adopt the consent calendar as presented or amended, minus item 9H, which we will treat separately? So, moved.
Second.
Moved by Cole, seconded by Teague. This is a voice vote. Yeah, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, moving to item 9H. Item 9H is actually a piece of correspondence concerning Community Police Review Board's recommendation that we amend the ordinance for the Community Police Review Board, and it's bylaws. Could I have a motion to approve, to accept, that particular piece of correspondence? So, moved. Second. Moved by Cole, seconded by Thomas. Discussion. Orville, did you want to address us on this? Orville, maybe for the benefit of the audience, you could elaborate just a little bit about what's being recommended by the Board?
Okay. Yeah, Orville Thompson, White Avenue. The Board is recommending that the ordinance be established or changed that would appoint a liaison from the City Council to the Community Police Review Board. History behind that is, when I first got on the Board, and the Police Review Board, we review any complaint that a citizen has concerning their feeling that they were treated unfairly by the police department. As you know, the police department, the cars and the officers have videotapes, so any complaint, you know, all members of the Board, as well as the police chief, you know, reviews those tapes to see exactly what happened. When I first got on the Board, I was concerned about, you know, a couple situations. We had a couple older members on the Board whose feelings and mentality was that we have to look out for our boys in blue. And that feeling, you know, I think in some situations, they made rulings that were in favor of the officer, but maybe it should have been otherwise. Situation like this, the citizens' rights are being violated, and they're not being given the due justice that they should receive. I found myself in an awkward situation. My choices were, I could come before you, the City Council, and I could complain, but I didn't think it was appropriate or productive to wash our dirty laundry in public. If I were to do that, the next day, every paper in the state would have it, and it would just be a mess. So, I chose not to do that. I'm the kind of person, if there's a problem, I feel that we need to work in the system to fix it. So, this is my attempt to do that at this time. I bring it to you. The-- I shared my concerns with the Board, and as a result of that, we are making this recommendation to you to appoint a liaison to the Police Review Board. Now, I can hold my own, but in those meetings, when I was, you know, trying to express my concerns, the vote was against me. But not everybody, you know, we've got a lot of citizens that they get uncommitted because they want to do a good job, and they basically want to make a difference. But they don't need a hassle. They may not feel comfortable coming before you, and in some cases, they may not feel comfortable, you know, arguing with the members on the Board. So, what they would do is, they would just kind of bury their head in the sand, and we have a problem that, you know, is ongoing. Also, I think it's important that we acknowledge a reality. You, as a Council, you appoint members to the Boards. You appointed me to the Police Citizen Review Board, and I guess my feeling is that if there's a problem, you cannot correct it if you do not know it exists. So, our recommendation is that, you know, a liaison will be appointed to the Police Community Review Board. If there's an individual who basically doesn't feel comfortable coming before you, or in some cases, even discussing it further in the Board meetings, then we have a liaison. Now, we know you guys don't want to start appointing liaisons because you open Pandora's box, but I think this is an exception. You appoint this Board, and if there-- and this is not just your average Board. We're talking about citizens' rights being violated. I think that should put this in a category that has more significance. So, you know, we are submitting this to you, and I would appeal to you to give it really heavy consideration and pass this.
Great. Thank you, Orville. Appreciate you coming. So, the question to us really is pretty simple. We're not going to vote up or down on this proposed ordinance, but the question is, do we want to have put on a formal meeting agenda the proposed ordinance, which we would then open to public conversation, have our own discussion, and vote about whether we want to approve it or amend it? So, that's the question before us. So, and I need to know whether a majority of us wants to have such a draft ordinance presented to us at a forthcoming formal meeting. So, what do you folks think?
I would say yes.
I'm supportive of it, yes.
I would say yes as well.
I would too, as an act of respect to the Board. I think there may be particular aspects of the proposed ordinance that we would want to deliberate upon more thoroughly, and I can't predict how that would go, but I think as an act of respect, we should do that.
I agree.
Yeah, okay. So, could I have a motion? Well, we don't really need to have a motion to direct the staff to put it on a future meeting. Okay, but we want you to do that. Okay, so, could I have a motion to accept the--
No.
Do we-- oh, well, that's right.
I think he had a motion to accept it.
Okay, right, thank you. So, all in favor of accepting this correspondence, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Okay. Now, we're-- we've already done the overall consent calendar, right?
Yep.
Okay, so we can move to item 10, which is community comment. So, this is the moment, as you all know, when anyone who would like to address us on any topic that's not on the formal meeting agenda should feel free to come up and speak. I'd like to ask you to first state your name, and then take not more than three minutes to state whatever is on your mind. And who's first? Good evening, Massimo.
Good evening. My name is Massimo Pachotto Biggers, and I went on a climate strike for three months, missing classes, in order to ask you to ask city leaders to act on our climate emergency. Three months later, I'm still waiting for a response. That makes me think you don't believe there is a climate emergency, that you have not noticed historic flooding, historic fires, historic melting of the permafrost, and all the daily headlines and studies. But there is a climate emergency, and cities and countries across the world are acting to meet IPCC levels. The good news is that our school board is finally doing something to move forward. I'm here again tonight because I met with the mayor and city manager, and was told all the reasons we're not doing very much for climate action in Iowa City. I was told our biggest source of emissions, our buildings, which release 56% of our carbon footprint, could not be regulated. We actually looked into it and found out that this is not true, that Iowa City can pass much better energy efficiency rules. To be honest, I feel like you misled me, that you lied to me, that you dismissed us. But this is my future, not yours. When I'm your age, scientists will tell us we will be facing ecological disasters in a planet that will not be livable if we continue at this pace, unless we act, and act quickly, and act with a real plan, not a half-baked plan. So, it's in your hands, at least for Iowa City. You can continue to dismiss us or lie to us, or you can apologize and pass a climate emergency resolution and a new plan that actually cuts our CO2 emissions in a real way. This is the real question. What is the cost of an action? Energy efficiency is called the low-hanging fruit. You could start by hiring more inspectors. You could provide incentives to retrofit old buildings. Then you could pass better regulations for new buildings, like New York City, which plans to cut CO2 emissions by 40% through energy efficiency. The C-40 Group, which is a coalition of cities for climate action, has agreed to net-zero standards for all buildings by 2030. Greta Thunberg has a great slogan, "No More Excuses." I hope I never hear any more excuses from you again. Thank you.
Thank you, Massimo. Anyone else?
Hi. My name is Diego Pachotto Biggers, and I also participated in the student climate strikes this spring. And last week, it was exciting to hear that the school board declared its intention to pass a climate resolution and get clean energy in the schools. With city staff and council, I've mainly heard excuses on why Iowa City is doing so little for climate action, but the time for excuses is over, and we can't afford to keep delaying. According to a study highlighted in every major newspaper last week, nearly 1 billion people will be displaced as refugees by the time I'm your age, and the world will be facing major conflicts over food, water, and the ecological collapse. That's my future, so you can imagine why we're here begging you to act, because I live in Iowa City, and we must act locally. If Iowa City can't lead the nation in climate action, then it's probably hopeless. The City Hall of Tiffin, where my friends live, have solar power as a way to show the community its government leaders believe in clean energy. Four years ago, Moxie Solar agreed to put a zero-down plan to put solar on Iowa City's Hall, but you refused. Climate emergency resolution is important because it would force you to actually do something and to be in line with the IPCC report. Iowa City, and according to the IPCC report, Iowa City needs to double its goal immediately, just like Dubuque did. For example, hundreds of cities have declared their intent to have 100% renewable energy within the next decade or so, and these cities don't rely on Mid-American for wind. I'm going to list a bunch of cities that have become leaders on clean energy and climate action, and I would like you to ask yourselves, if these cities can do it, why can't we? Madison, Wisconsin, Milwaukee, Minneapolis, St. Paul, St. Louis, Abida Springs, Amherst, Athens, Augusta, and there's 150 more. They're all cities just like Iowa City, but they're not finding excuses. Pass the climate action-- pass the climate emergency and put Iowa City in the forefront of climate action. Thank you.
Thank you, Diego.
My name is Brayden Marker, and I am a supporter of the climate strike. I first would like to read to you a quote from Greta Thunberg, the Swedish student who has inspired climate strikes around the world. She said, "We have to understand the emergency of the situation. Our leadership has failed us. Young people must hold older generations accountable for the mess they have created." Going off of what she said, we are here to hold you accountable. Can we honestly say we're doing everything in our power to make Iowa City a national leader in climate action? Every day, we read terrifying new studies and news reports on our climate breakdown, and yet, our government officials seem to think we can continue business as usual. But, business as usual is over. In these past weeks alone, we have seen historic floods in Iowa, historic deadly heat waves in India, and historic fires in the West. On top of that, we've seen studies that 1 million species are going extinct. What would it take for us to make climate action a priority for all of our planning, not just an agenda item we can discuss when it's convenient? I'm here to ask you to pass a climate emergency resolution and update your climate plan. As you know, the UN Council of Scientists, the IPCC, has called on all cities and states and countries to cut CO2 emissions by 45% by 2030 and reach zero emissions by 2050 in order for me to live on an inhabitable planet. That sounds like an emergency, because, well, it is. In the news just today, we learned that the permafrost in Alaska has melted 70 years earlier than scientists expected. That is an entire lifetime. Last night, Canada announced a climate emergency plan following other countries. Cities across the country are acting with a sense of urgency. New York City just passed laws requiring all buildings to reduce CO2 emissions by 40% through strict energy efficiency rules. Over 150 cities, as mentioned by my peers, have publicly declared their commitment to use only 100% renewable energy within a decade. College towns like Ithaca, New York, are launching Green New Deal initiatives for green jobs in retrofitting buildings and local green businesses. Atlanta just set aside seven acres for local food cultivation. Some cities are planting millions of trees. Whether it be planting trees versus destroying them, using completely renewable energy, or anything in between, there are so many amazing things Iowa City could be doing, but all of this begins with you, you publicly declaring there's a climate emergency, and you committing to my generation that you will do everything in your power to update your climate plan, not just continue business as usual. I recognize that some of the things I say may come off very forward. My intent is not to play the blame game, but to express the critical levels of our situation. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Brayden.
Hi. My name is Garrett, and I'm a senior at City High, and I've been part of the numerous climate strikes this spring.
Pardon me, Garrett. What's your last name?
Forbes. Sorry. We all know that there is a climate emergency. It's enough to read the headlines and latest studies. According to the IPCC, we need to cut CO2 emissions by 45% immediately. When the UN tells you that 1 million species are on track for extinction, signaling an ecological collapse, it's probably time to take notice. And when historic flooding wipes out parts of the Midwest and causes billions of dollars in damages, it's probably time to act. We all also know that cities are not just sitting back, but declaring climate emergency plans to transition to green economies. This is our opportunity with a climate emergency declaration. Iowa City can finally begin the process of engaging the community to act. It's about sponsoring forums and events and activities to educate our town and bring the city together with our school district and the university and the county. It's about social equity and making sure that people who can least afford to lose with climate change, with higher utility rates, higher food prices, more diseases, and hotter days, are protected. Many cities are combining energy efficiency and renewable energy and local food with low-income housing development. A climate emergency resolution is about launching a tree planting campaign, like Adelaide, Australia, which planted 3 million trees, and Iowa City farmer planted 40,000 trees just a few years ago. This is a great step to recapture carbon lost in our soil. A climate emergency resolution is about moving us towards 100% renewable energy, like hundreds of other cities. A climate change resolution is about committing to electric buses, and a climate emergency resolution is about bringing our community together. Please pass a climate energy resolution and update our climate plan to meet the crisis of our times. Thank you.
Thank you, Garrett. Good evening.
Hi. My name is Yardley Whalen. I'm also a senior at City High who has been doing climate strikes, and recently I have had a meeting with Mr. Throgmorton, along with the city managers, where we talked over and attempted to improve this proposed climate energy plan. But to be frank, we were not quite satisfied with the results, especially when it came to building code rules, which Mo has just touched on. So, for clarification, we found that we can improve our building codes. We just simply cannot deregulate them. Let's see. It may seem like a miniscule thing, but with the issues that we are facing, we simply cannot cut any corners when it comes to climate action. We must take action with seriousness and urgency. Since our country is not looking at implementing a climate action plan and declaring an emergency, unfortunately, it becomes our burden to bear. We cannot excuse ourselves from the problem simply because it is costly and difficult, because the consequences are much greater. So, we would hope that we can improve this fault in the plan and increase funding towards retrofitting our buildings to decrease our carbon emissions. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, Carla.
Good evening. My name is Carla Pachotto. I'm a mother of climate strikers and active supporters of their climate action. And I'm in Iowa City-- oh, my God. I live in Iowa City. So, I would like just to add a few details about the meeting that we had with the mayor and the city manager and the assistant city manager just two weeks ago, following a march that the high schoolers and middle schoolers participated in just at the end of May for climate action. And I was one of the two adults in the meeting. There were four children. And after we, you know, talked about our demands, the mayor and the city manager proceeded to explain to us why 54% of carbon emissions in Iowa City were not really-- they couldn't cut. And this seems to be something, kind of a mantra, of both the mayor and the city manager and the assistant city manager, related to the fact that Iowa City, because of state limitations in terms of regulating carbon emissions, basically this was the biggest obstacle for them. For some reason, their explanation wasn't convincing, and so we investigated, but also mainly, we relied on the Press Citizen article that inquired about the-- inquired about the actual state regulations and limitations on, you know, a city, an Iowa City possibility in terms of regulating carbon emissions. So according to the Iowa Fire Marshal, Dan Wood, who oversees the State Building Code Bureau, cities can adopt anything they want as long as it is more strict. As a rule, the State Building Code Bureau has enforced these codes as a starting point. Keep in mind that codes are considered, this is a quotation, considered the starting point. If you're going to give a building a grade just for meeting code, that building has got a D minus because it just got the minimum, said David Rothkorn, an architect and state energy efficiency code expert. If you make your building better, you go up in that grading scale. So basically, his statements totally debunk what we've been told over and over and over. We've been silenced by the city manager, the assistant city manager, and the mayor's statements about this impossibility to change these state requirements. It is quite puzzling. It is actually inconceivable to us that the city spent an apparent $80,000 on an out-of-town consultant for the climate plan and did not even address the biggest source of CO2 emissions in the city. So we're really wondering, either you have been misled and misinformed by the city staff, or the city staff has been misinformed, or the city staff simply prefers a restricted building in an age of climate breakdown. We're just very puzzled. I just recall distinctly that, you know, Pauline, Jim, John, and Rockney ran on a campaign for city councilors as a climate action candidates. And I remember distinctly that the big point was that you wanted to break down the revolving door system related to how developers basically have been running the city. I totally remember this. We need to stop that. And what's really, I would say outrageous, is that actually, you've been supporting pretty much a very similar system that you said you were going to dismantle. So also, as a mother, I'm very troubled because I understand the misinformation, the misrepresentation among adults. But actually, to misinform and misrepresent your policies in front of children, they're actually have taken three months of their school time, energy, to really come to you and, I would say in an innocent way, and trust in you. Because in the end, children cannot do anything else than trusting adults and people in power. It's really outrageous.
Pardon me, Carla. I asked people to limit themselves to three minutes. We've let you speak for five.
Okay. Thank you very much. So thank you for listening.
Anyone else? All right, Brandon.
I am Brandon Ross. I think that the move from five minutes to three minutes, kind of a precipitous leap into the abyss there. It's hard to speak with the eloquence and concision and pithiness that city councilors can speak with. So I am requesting, first and foremost of all, that you put back public speak from three minutes to five minutes, instead of having commercials. And I would also like to reinforce that the climate change action is very important. I think we should have a committee on this. And I'm willing to give back my remaining two minutes to the previous speaker or any of the speakers who have been there before. Since I only have three minutes, I will give those to them, if it's okay with you.
So the last question is, will you finally step up to the task at hand and follow through with a climate emergency declaration, commit Iowa City to updating its now clearly outdated climate plan to meet the IPCC levels? Will you finally hire and empower competent new staff person to carry out the crucial plan for Iowa City? I'm not very shy at this point, and I really feel like our city manager has not been honest and has not been up to the task. And Mayor, I actually don't want to believe that you have, you know, you've given out false or inaccurate information on purpose. I feel like you've been misled and misinformed. You trust the experts. I really want to believe that. But at this point, again, I'm not shy to say that I see a lot of incompetence or lack of transparencies in the city manager managing. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else who wants to address us? Good evening, Adil.
Good evening. Adil Adams, Iowa City. Last month, I raised issue regarding outpatient or dialysis patient about housing, and I never received any feedback from the city council. I don't know, did they deny my application or just ignoring that? The issue for me is very important. I do dialysis for five years. And still, I wanna, before I speak, to make sure they're gonna give me feedback for my letter. I raised it to the city council. I don't know if they're gonna send me letter or can answer my question right now.
Jeff, my recollection is that we've had staff communications with Adil. Is that correct?
Yeah, but I think he's taking issue with the staff position on his application. So we can inform you of what that situation is, if you'd like. I'm prepared to do that now, but, like information, I can give it to you.
You are prepared, is that what you said?
No, I'm not prepared tonight, but I can provide you that information.
Without objection, I think we should at least hear what Adil's complaint is and whether we think staff's done something wrong.
Okay.
Yeah. So we can't address it tonight, but I've just instructed this, we have just instructed the city manager to provide us with information so we can judge whether or not we believe we should do something.
Okay. Thank you.
Good evening, Mike.
Good evening. City Council, Mike Carberry, Iowa City. And I've spent the last 20 years working on climate change solutions, with a four-year detour as a Johnson County Supervisor. And on that regards, I'd like to thank you for agreeing to fund the mobility coordinator position for another year. That was a project that very near and dear to my heart. Back to climate change solutions, and I'd like to thank the climate strike students here for taking leadership. It's the youth that will lead us on this issue, on guns and everything else. It's their future, and we're burning it down. When you have a climate emergency, somebody needs to call 911. Maybe it's the city council here that needs to do it. In 2006, I was chair of the Iowa City Sierra Club, and Tom Karzner and I gave an award to the city, the Cool Cities Award, to, the city signed on to the Kyoto Protocols from 1999 for climate and carbon reduction. And the city took some steps at that time, hired Brendan Nations as sustainability coordinator. I'm not sure if I got her title right, and we've done some carbon footprinting, and now you've got a climate plan. But it seems to me, and to many others, that maybe that's inadequate and a little bit too conservative, this plan. You know, we've had two 500-year floods, '93 and '08. We've had record precipitation here in Iowa and the nation in the last year. We've had flooding in the fall, two out of the last three years, and I know that specifically. As a county supervisor, I was getting daily updates from emergency management. We need to do something. We need to do something now. Recent reports say the clock is ticking, and that time is running out. We have to be at 100% renewable energy by 2050, and we need to take bold and decisive action to get there. This city is often referred to as the People's Republic of Iowa City, or Johnson County, and we're looked to around the country and around the state as leaders. But on climate action, we've really not been a leader. We've been in the middle of the pack. And I'm asking you, as are all these climate strikers, to take bold and decisive action and to call 911 because we've got a climate emergency. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike.
Mr. Mayor and Council. My name is Miriam Kasha, and I live in North Liberty, and I'm a member of 100 Grannies for a Livable Future. Wow. Grannies have been standing with and behind these kids for a number of weeks now. We know what they're doing, and we know why they're doing it, and we believe that they are 100% on track. I did a little simple math. These kids are, I don't know, something around 13, 14 years old. The IPCC tells us that in 12 years, unless we have shifted course totally and gone the other direction, the game is over. They'd be 25, think about it. So this got referenced a few times by others. I don't have a lot to add to what's already been said, but it's a list of the cities in the United States that already have 100% plans or already on track with those, have already achieved those, and states and other things. I'm gonna leave this with you, and I'm gonna send you each a digital copy of it. This came from the Sierra Club yesterday. Iowa City isn't on this list, and it should be. So I look up here, and I see seven goals. The sixth goal says, promote environmental sustainability. I'm going to respectfully suggest we move that to number one, we pass a climate emergency resolution to match our climate existential urgent, whatever it is. It's a crisis, folks, and we need to act on it. And you are our leaders in this. I'm asking you to be bold, aggressive, and comprehensive. Let's do the job.
Thank you, Miriam.
I give this to you.
Could I have a motion to accept correspondence, please?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Cole. Second by MEMS. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Thank you. Good evening, Sheila.
Good evening. So hello there. My name is Sheila Zeithamel, and I wanted to state that this is one of, or the only, in my opinion, the biggest crisis that's facing everyone on this planet. I think that, for all of us, the most important thing that each one of us can do is to address this increasing carbon emissions, because our planet is warming, and the only way to stop this warming is to reduce emissions. So we met Jim with you, and we met with Jeff, and we met with Ashley, a group of us did, and we talked about declaring a climate emergency. My stance hasn't changed on that. I still request, demand that the city declare a climate emergency and that you develop a community campaign led by city officials. Number two, that the city council update your climate action plan to IPCC levels. And number three, that you hire and empower a climate action coordinator to carry out this plan. I also want to add that I think that this county, the city council, the Iowa City Community School District, and also the Johnson County Supervisors, if the three, these three entities are not acting together in unison, as a team, as a partnership, to solve this problem that we have in Johnson County, I would certainly encourage you folks, somebody, to reach out and start engaging so that the three of you, these entities, can work together, because it'll be a lot easier if we do teamwork. And you're not in this alone. I mean, we will all help you in whatever you need to do, but you have to take action. You have to take bold action. Leadership requires bold actions, bold decision, bold decision-making, and that task is upon you. This is the time. It's up to you to take that bold action.
Thank you, Sheila.
Good evening, Council. My name is Charlie Easton. I live in Iowa City. I don't want to detract from what's been talked about by many people, very inspirationally by students, in regard to climate action that's needed. And I'm sure there will be much support among the community for the things that you've been asked to do if you will undertake them. I just wanted to go back to the police traffic stop study that you received during your work session. Just to review very briefly, that study looked at traffic stops over the last year, the actual studies done by Professor Barnum and done over the last 10 years. And they, his findings are that the police force and the leadership of Chief Mathely and the city manager Jeff Frun is gradually reducing the disparities in traffic stops in this community. I am curious, though, if we could extend the data analysis a little bit further to see if those reductions in individual officer disparities shown by the index data that the Professor Barnum included in his presentation, if those, the idea is to get those index numbers down to one. If in fact, if those index numbers do go down to one, which means that no police officers are showing disparities in their individual traffic stop decisions, if that would mean that the ratio of African-American, Latinx residents in the community who do experience traffic stops is similar to their ratio of the entire population in the community. So that, I noticed that in, I think, 2016, there are roughly 1,500 or so African-American blacks residents who were stopped for, as part of, or had a traffic stop, which is about three times the ratio, that 1,500 is the total number of traffic stops, is about three times the ratio of black and Latinx residents to the entire community. So if that, if those ratios, if that ratio goes down to one, then that means there are many, many fewer African-American, Latinx residents being stopped, which to me would be a great thing for the entire community. So I wondered if the analysis of that data could be extended to see if the numbers of black and African-American, Latinx residents that are being stopped now, if they're not stopped because the individual officer ratios go down to one, if that would mean that the ratio of the entire population of African-American and blacks and Latinx residents would also go down proportional to what their numbers in the community are. It's an easy calculation to make, I think, and I think it would be very helpful if we're, as we're looking how to improve the lives of everyone in the community.
Thank you, Charlie. Anyone else? All right, Tom.
Hello. My name is Tom Karzner, and as a graduate of City High, I'm glad to stand in solidarity with the climate strikers who have spoken and others who have stood with them tonight. I do believe that the city's plan needs to be updated to accelerate the CO2 emissions reduction schedule, excuse me, to match the IPCC levels. I stood at this podium in 2006, as Mike Carberry talked about, for the Sierra Club in the Cool Cities Program. Looking back at that time, 13 years ago, it may have seemed kind of simplistic and simple, the things that we were proposing, such as LED lights in the traffic, traffic light system. Now things are more severe, and while progress has been made in city activities, such as the LED lights, we're really talking about activities that need to be ramped up significantly to meet these types of problems. And my thought in 2006, and my thought today... And my thought in 2006 and my thought today is that Iowa City should be an example. And we got off to somewhat of a start back then and did some things, but I do think frankly that the city has lost its shine in being an example. I think first we got sidetracked into bureaucracy. The original climate plan did create a 2008 baseline of greenhouse gas emissions, but not a whole lot more that's really tangible. We can do more. And then the second point, elections changed the city council and the momentum for action changed. That's why I was extremely hopeful in 2015, and if I can address this to the four councilors that were elected in 2015, I had high hopes that things would change significantly. I haven't given up. I'm just here to encourage you to do more because the times demand more. And it's something that's important and we need to show that Iowa City can be an example, a leader in clean energy and in reducing our carbon footprint as a city. And when the city leads, residents will also follow. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. Anyone else? Hi, Liz. How are you?
Good. How are you? My name is Liz Moss. I live in Iowa City. I'm also a parent of a climate striker and I teach environmental science at Kirkwood Community College. As some of you know, I know many of you. I love these seven goals. I think these are great to aspire to, but there isn't a single one that climate doesn't impact. So somebody earlier pointed out number six, should be put back to number one, but really one through seven, you can't have a healthy economy, you can't have vibrant, walkable places where people want to live if you have lots of immigrants that are coming here that are stressed out, like why one of our councilors isn't here tonight, right? I work with a lot of people from Northern Africa. I'm from Sudan and I'm expecting that there's only going to be more of those people. I think our community's done a great job trying to support what their needs are, but I think we're going to be feeling the crush of that more, certainly. Healthy neighborhoods, air pollution, water quality, always a big, big one for me, as you know, solid financial foundation. Again, I know a lot of this, I'm on the committee for climate action. I was part of the group that wrote the plan and the plan is what the plan is. I think the plan could be more aggressive. There are some things that are happening that I think we don't do a lot of talking about, to tell people that this is what's going on, maybe behind the scenes, things that we're thinking about or planning. The enhanced community engagement and intergovernmental relations, that's the part that I think is missing a little bit. It's sort of like buying a new car, right? The minute you buy the car, the minute you drive it off the lot, it's suddenly worth less money. Government takes time. There's always the financial burden, the financial concerns that are associated with that too, but the strength to stand up and say, this is where we have to stand, these are the minimums that we have to meet. I think that that's what we need to do. We need to have a climate emergency and we need to say that this is who we are and be Iowa City. Thank you.
Thank you, Liz. Good evening, Jeff.
Jeff Figurs. So it's in your hands now. July 2nd, you're going to have a work session. And we've done the best we can do for many years. It's a lot of amazing people here tonight. And it took a lot for the kids to do this. They didn't really want to come tonight. They felt betrayed. They felt misled, lied to. And we told them they have to have hope. Three years ago, Massimo asked me, is there any hope? And I can't be a dilettante. I said, hope resists. That's what it's about. We go and we roll up our sleeves and we do the hard work. And we trusted you when we put you into office to do the right thing. These kids are facing a climate emergency. That's a fact. If anybody disagrees with that, they should get out of here right now. If you're not up to the task, you should really step down. But now is the time for leadership and we need it from you to make Iowa City what it really should be, which is the leader in the state and the region and the nation. We need your help, Bruce, to be the leader on this. And Pauline, this is a public health care disaster and you know that. And John, you, I mean, you, your experience is invaluable of what we can do to capture soil and the carbon we've lost in our soil. There's so many things we can do to be a leader and we're asking you to step up on July 2nd. We're not going to be here. These kids, I don't want them to come back anymore. They've done this extraordinary job for three months. They have moved the school board that is now passing a climate resolution and moving forward with incredible policies. And the school board is 100% on board. They've been educated by these kids. And John, you came to Southeast Junior High and you saw this incredible thing. 90 students presented their view of what Iowa City could look like as a regenerative city and it was extraordinary. These kids believe in this because it's their future. It's not something that can be agenda item if we might get to it, if we have time. We really are counting on you on July 2nd to make us proud and to step up and put this city first. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Jeff. Thanks all of you for speaking. We're not in a position to engage in give and take. I would want to mention two points. One is to reemphasize the point that we are going to have a work session discussion focusing on this particular question about whether we want to alter our climate action plan in any particular way. We're going to do that on July 2nd. The second thing I want to mention is that we have reached out to attorneys in state government for clarification about whether we can adopt energy codes that are more stringent than what the state energy code currently is. And we'll find out from them whether that's the case. It certainly is not what we understood to be the situation, but we're going to find out and we've asked the state attorney's office, or the state's attorneys in the relevant state office to let us know what the legal fact is. Okay, we can move on to our next item, which is item 11, Planning and Zoning Matters. Item 11A, rezoning at the northwest corner of Benton Street and Orchard Street. This is an ordinance conditionally rezoning approximately 1.75 acres of land located at the northwest corner of Benton Street and Orchard Street from medium-density, single-family residential, RS8, to Riverfront Crossings Orchard RFC-0. I'm going to open the public hearing and ask Danielle to say hello. Hi, Danielle.
Hello, Mayor, Council. Danielle Sissman, Neighborhood and Development Services. First application for you tonight is for rezoning on Benton Street at Orchard Street. The applicant in this case is M. and W. Properties. They're requesting a rezoning of approximately 1.75 acres located in the dashed white area showing on the screen. Each property located within the subject area is owned by the applicant. The applicant is looking to rezone the subject property to assemble it for development. The intended development is for two multifamily buildings containing a combination of 125 units. Each building would have a maximum height of three stories, which is set by the sub-district to which they are requesting the rezoning. This is the Orchard Sub-District. If you'll recall, it was added to the downtown and Riverfront Crossings master plan in 2016. A portion of this district has seen redevelopment already by this applicant, the northern portion in the darker orange there. The portion that's under request tonight is the lighter orange along the southern boundary. The comp plan's intention is to provide a transition in this Orchard Court Sub-District between more intense uses in the West Riverfront District and the current single-family uses to the west. The applicant did conduct a good neighbor meeting as part of the master plan amendment and did not repeat that process with this application. It has been evaluated toward the standards for a rezoning, which does include a consideration of whether it's in compliance with the comprehensive plan. Since this is the sub-district, the master plan district for Riverfront Crossings, that was a relevant district to which we look to, staff to do their analysis. There are several components of the Orchard Street, the Orchard Sub-District, like I explained, the transition between a single-family neighborhood and higher intensity as well as some other factors. Staff did review those with the Planning Commission. As included in the adoption of the Riverfront Crossings District was the implementation tool, which is the Form-Based Code, that contains a regulating plan, which is shown on this slide to the right. There are some features of the regulating plan specific to the site, including the circled purple thing oval showing a pedestrian street that has been incorporated into the applicant's concept design for the site. Basically, the concept at this point shows the two buildings I mentioned, one oriented north-south and one more toward an east-west alignment, further north on the site. Staff did review also compatibility with the existing neighborhood, again, looking towards the master plan for insight into what that meant in this specific instance. This site will be required to comply with the Form-Based Code standards, which were developed with the intention to ensure compatibility. We did also request a traffic study to be conducted, looking at the impact of this development on the surrounding neighborhood traffic patterns. At this time, staff's not requesting additional signalization at this intersection. The traffic study did reveal minor additional traffic, 30 to 40 trips being added to the peak periods of traffic flow. That does result in a level of surface service D through the 2040 peak periods. That's generally acceptable in urban conditions. Staff's hesitation to recommend any kind of signalization was based on the fact that the intersection with Riverside Drive and Benton Street is very nearby to this intersection. It was basically a much closer combination of traffic signals than anywhere else in the city. Instead, staff looked at alternate ways to address traffic. That would include the next application on your agenda, which is a vacation of some right-of-way along the northern boundary of this property. The city vacating some right-of-way to make room for the development to incorporate a driveway along that alignment and then the eventual connection of that driveway to a north-south, let's see if I can hide this, this north-south driveway, private driveway. So basically, instead of signaling this intersection here to address traffic, there's providing an alternate route through the site because, with the vacation and with this additional easement and driveway. That's intended also to facilitate further development of the Orchard District to the north. There's also, there's a potential for additional redevelopment in this neighborhood and that would allow for traffic to have multiple routes to reach the main street. Did also review transportation for pedestrians and bicycles. Benton Street is identified in the Iowa City Bicycle Master Plan as a functional bike, as part of the on-street bike network. There will be sidewalks installed with any development that occurs here, including both Orchard Street and Benton Street. As far as next step goes, we're at the step highlighted in green on the screen, the rezoning. After the rezoning, it's been recommended to you by the Planning and Zoning Commission after tonight, or after the rezoning is resolved. The next steps would basically be administrative steps, including a site plan review step and a design review for Form-Based Code compliance. So based on staff's analysis, the proposed rezoning is consistent with the comprehensive plan or the sub-district plan, which is the master plan, compatible and/or complementary with the existing neighborhood and would not overburden public facilities. Staff did recommend approval of the application to the Planning and Zoning Commission with eight conditions. At their May 16th meeting, the Planning and Zoning Commission did uphold staff's recommendation and is forwarding the application for your consideration with the eight conditions recommended by staff to be included in a conditional zoning agreement. My understanding is this conditional zoning agreement has been signed by the applicant. The conditions included kind of a standard condition requiring compliance with affordable housing requirements, the inclusion of that vacation case contingent to this to allow for that alternate path for traffic, should it be needed, that the developer dedicate 15 feet of right-of-way along the north side of Benton Street frontage to the city to facilitate sidewalk installation and to standardize the alignment of sidewalks along Benton Street, construction of a six-foot sidewalk in that frontage, construction of a sidewalk along Orchard Street, the provision of a 30-foot wide easement, access easement running north-south along that driveway area highlighted, construction of a pedestrian street as shown in the regulating plan and dedication of a public access easement over that span of the street. And that concludes my staff report.
Great. Thanks, Danielle. Any questions for Danielle? I'm not hearing any. Thank you. Would anyone else like to address this topic?
In light of what has been spoken about today earlier regarding this development, a lot of the language of development is very abstracted for the citizens. We heard a lot of conversation earlier about environmental considerations. What environmental considerations are being included in this particular development? Has this gone through an environmental committee to decide whether or not this is actually environmentally sound? I think, why not start right now, since we have been alerted to this? I would also point out that there is affordable housing etched in there, at least in that phrase has been etched in there. What is affordable housing in this area? Who will be able to afford this? You know, a lot of affordable housing is talked about, but oftentimes we don't really see concrete results. You know, what, maybe this can be answered. How many units? How many units are affordable? And what does affordable mean? How much are they going to be charging? In this city, in the past 35 years, I believe that, you know, the trend has been to develop for the top 10% or 20% and the bottom 80%, which is the majority, the working classes, end up with nothing. And, you know, Chauncey Swan is one example of that and it's in close. So I would like to make those two major points. One is the environmental integrity and the other is about affordability. And on our seven-point map of things we like to do, I'd like to say one in four are redundant and over number four, where it says financial and has the money bags, I think the city should include in its seven points, which is also environmentally integral, equality should be one of the seven, equality. So environmental and affordable, what is affordable? Perhaps this can be answered by the previous speaker, with all due respect. Thank you.
Could be. Danielle, do you or perhaps Tracy have an answer to the question about affordability within this particular project? I assume it has to comply with the Riverfront Crossings District Code?
Affordable, it has to comply with the affordable housing requirement in the code. So 10% of the units have to be affordable to people at below 60% median income and the rents can't exceed the fair market rent, the same limit that's available for CDBG and home, basically. It's the home fair market rents.
Be very brief.
So basically, what are these places going to be costing? Is what Iowa Cityans who are watching this, reading this, want to know. What are they going to be costing? And without percentages, what percentage of Iowa Cityans will be able to afford to live in this development?
Okay, Brandon, I think we got it. Thank you. Anyone else want to address this topic? Okay, seeing no one else, I need to ask the council whether you are inclined to vote in accordance with the Planning and Zoning Commission to, with its recommendation that we approve the rezoning. Are you inclined to vote in accordance?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. So I'm going to close the public hearing. Could I have a motion for first consideration, please?
So moved.
Second. Moved by MEM, seconded by Cole. Discussion.
I would, regarding the affordable housing piece and Brandon's question, I think one of the things, and I find myself having to go back and look at documents because if you don't have these numbers in front of yourself, I can't keep track of them. And I don't know if I've talked with you, Bruce, or whatever. I think it would be helpful, if it's not too much of an effort on staff's part, whenever we're talking about affordable housing, because I know these numbers also change, to put in a quick chart, if you can insert it, that shows the average median income numbers and what does that actually mean? mean in terms of the rent that people would pay if they're at 80% or 60% or 40%? Is that something that is reasonably doable?
We can do that, as long as we understand the disclaimer that you're approving a rezoning. We don't know that the building's going to be built right away. It could be that the building follows in a couple of years, and as you mentioned, the rent levels, numbers adjust every year, so.
We just have to base it on that assumption.
You just have to, you just have to use the current numbers and understand that those will change before the building's built and gets its occupancy permit.
Yeah, and I appreciate that comment, Jeff, because I do think that's really important, that people understand that those numbers are continually changing. But I think that's a common concern in the community, and like I say, I can't keep those numbers straight. If somebody were to ask me, if somebody's at 60% of area median income, what does that mean they're going to pay for one of our affordable housing units in the Riverfront Crossings, for, say, a one-bedroom or a two-bedroom apartment? I wouldn't even begin to be able to answer that question. So to have that stuff a little more frequently in our packets in terms of being with anything that relates to that, I think would get it out in front of the public more and would certainly help us, I think, kind of keep those numbers a little more top of mind.
Yeah, I agree.
So if that's.
Easy to do, and we'll get those numbers for your second consider, assuming this passes for your second reading.
Thank you.
Any other council discussion?
I do have to say, because I'm rehabbing a building right now with a little construction, and so when we're talking about new construction, personally, I would have found it very helpful for someone to just come in and do an environmental review and just say, hey, these are, have you considered this? Because I'm, even though we're going to be talking about climate change, I'm still educating myself on what all that means. And so I, you know, one, one thing I will say is that it may not be such a bad idea to, at some point where we're talking about climate change, maybe just, some of this stuff is going to come up about potentially, do we have a review for projects within our community, as well as when things are being retrofitted, just communicating with individuals within our community, how they can make things a little more climate-friendly. As far as affordability, do we know how long this will be affordable for the units? Is it a 20-year?
Ten.
Ten.
It's a 10-year requirement.
Okay. In the future, I think I'm just going to be really zoning in on that a little bit, because I feel that in 10 years, these individuals have to move, if they can no longer afford regular rent, whoever live in this building, let's say they've been there for 10 years, let's say it's a, it's a child that is with their parents at five years old, when they become 15 years old, they're going to have to move out of this building if they cannot afford the regular rent. And depending on what they can afford, that lifestyle will be very different. All their friends, you know, from where they've been, it's going to look very different. We have, Iowa City has, every neighborhood is different. I live on the west side, I think it's different from the north side. And so I, I think that we really do have to look at how we're doing these affordabilities in these projects that only last 10 years, the embarrassment that this 15-year-old will have to have when they have to move out, because this is what they've been used to. So nevertheless, I will support this, but in the future, I'm going to be zoning in a little bit more on this affordability periods.
At some point in past council discussions, we have indicated that we would, we are interested in the possibility of extending that 10-year period to 20 years. I don't know that we decided to do that, but we've had that conversation. I believe it's something we need to consider. Further discussion?
Traveling Benton Street quite often, because I also live on the west side, my concern centers around the traffic volumes, and it was mentioned that they're found to be acceptable. But Benton Street, and especially that stretch off of Riverside Drive, is very, very busy, and there's oftentimes, people are confused, they're in the wrong lane, and they don't want to turn off, they wanted to go straight on Benton Street, and so then they're trying to jockey over to the right lane. And I just really have concerns about that, that busy corridor there and adding that much more right now currently. It's just, it's some duplexes and some single-family homes, and to multiply that by 135 units, I just really have concerns about that. And also echoing back on the, our environmentalist friends, I've been harping on that for a long time about new buildings, trying to be more energy-efficient and requesting permeable pavement, but I've been told it's more expensive, but I think they do need to seriously consider that. I know we can't put that in a condition, but we could certainly encourage it. But I am concerned about the traffic volume for that large a building.
I'll comment on it. I'm going to be supporting the project, but I do want to make a few comments about it. One is, you know, with respect to the affordability aspect, Miller Orchard as a neighborhood is one of the more, it's kind of an interesting enclave of affordable housing, you know, and it's surrounded by very large multifamily developments, so it's kind of almost like this small island of affordability near the downtown. And I'm a little bit concerned with the, you know, the threat of redevelopment in this area, which could result in the displacement of some of that affordable housing. So that's one concern, and it's reflected in part by the fact that this, this project, you know, if you look at what it, what's, what's taking place on this 1.75 acres, it currently, you know, there are currently, what is it, 12, 12 units, I believe, on this 1.75 acres. It will, it will go from 12 to 125. That's a tenfold increase in density. You know, we've kind of lost track of density questions because of our move to a Form-Based Code. But it's essentially over 70 units per acre that is being built on this property. That's higher than any of our multifamily residential zones, you know, in our typical zoning ordinance, not setting aside the Form-Based Code. So I'm concerned what, introducing these levels of density could conceivably do in terms of future development. You know, we're talking about this project as being a transition between Riverfront Crossings and the Riverfront District, the West Riverfront District with the single-family zoning to the west. I would probably say it's really leaning more toward the Riverfront, West Riverfront District than it is to the single-family. You know, if we're talking about this as a transition, I, I would want to view it as a bridge, that it's something that one can understand in terms of the transition in either direction, and I really feel that it's, it's leaning much more toward the Form-Based Code to the east than it is to the existing single-family to the west. I've always felt that, you know, the Miller Orchard area is a really interesting place for that missing middle concept of smaller development. And what we're seeing, because it's allowed in this Miller Orchard Zone, is a multifamily to a fairly high intensity, given the existing use. So these are, these are my concerns looking forward. I don't want to lose the character of that Miller Orchard neighborhood. I think it's a really special place, and so I'm going to be looking very carefully at how future development is considered beyond this particular project.
I want to address some of the points that Brandon Ross raised have to do with the environmental effects, basically, of this particular structure or proposed rezoning, under the assumption that they will actually build these structures that we've seen renderings of. Some of the features I think of are, first, it's located within walking distance of downtown. That's a big asset for, from an environmental point of view. Secondly, it's located on a bus line. That, too, is a big asset from an environmental point of view. Thirdly, it must meet current state energy code for new buildings, which is, it's my understanding that's, that's what we have to do. Of course, this is the thing we need to clarify. But it has to meet that energy code, which is pretty stringent, but ideally, we would push it quite a bit farther. And lastly, one of our work session items reads as follows, "Discuss amending the code to require staff and rezoning applicants of large-scale developments to consider the effects of the proposed projects on future carbon emissions and absorption capacity, and to take actions that will help achieve the city's carbon emission reduction goals." So we can't apply that particular language to this project, because we don't have any legal basis for doing such a thing. And I don't know if this is a large enough scale of a development to be, for that kind of language to be applicable, even if we do move in that direction. But I think we need to be moving in that direction and to be considering the, and this is consistent with what you said earlier, Bruce, to be considering the effects of proposed large-scale projects on future carbon emissions and absorption capacity, and so on. So I think there are good environmental features associated with this proposed rezoning, and likewise, there are affordable housing elements contained within it. It's not ideal, but it's something I'm going to support. Any other comments? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Cole?
Yes.
Mims?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Teague?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
And Throg Martin?
Yes.
Motion carries six to zero. Item 11B, vacation and conveyance of right-of-way north of Benton Street off of Orchard Court. This is a resolution vacating and conveying approximately 4,482 square feet of right-of-way north of Benton Street, west of Orchard Court, to M. and W. properties subject to a utility easement.
I'll open the public hearing. Danielle?
Thank you, Mayor. This is the vacation that I referenced in the earlier presentation accompanying this application and conditioned upon it, the rezoning. This exhibit shows the location of the area to be vacated. The right-of-way is about 20 feet wide on the east end off of Orchard Court and narrows down to 10 feet wide to its western terminus. The area requested for vacation is 4,482 square feet. As I said, the applicant intends to convert the right-of-way to part of their development, intending to pave the area for a private drive for future, the future multifamily development. The applicant owns the majority of the property to the south of the subject property. Analysis of a vacation requires six factors to be considered. Staff did walk through these factors in formulating their recommendation, including the access to, the impact of vehicle and pedestrian circulation if the right-of-way were to be vacated. Currently, the right-of-way does not support vehicle or pedestrian traffic. It's overgrown and not utilized as a street. The impacts to emergency and utility vehicles were assessed. Essentially, the replacement driveway would improve emergency vehicle access over what is currently provided. The impact to adjacent private properties, staff not aware of any properties currently using that right-of-way as their primary access or any significant access due to its condition. As far as the desirability of the right-of-way for access needs, as I said, the adjoining property owners do not use it or do not appear to use it, and city staff has no plans for the improvement of that or right-of-way for a future road or alley. The location of utilities and other facilities was investigated. There is one private utility in that area. Unless the utility company decides to abandon that use, the city would need to retain a utility easement over it to allow them to remain there. And then any other relevant factors pertaining to this, the applicant has offered to purchase the area to be vacated, which would be a consideration for the city council later. So in summary, the subject right-of-way is not currently being used, not intended to be used by the city, and it provides an improved public safety feature once it would be conveyed to the applicant for part of redevelopment. There are no additional next steps after the consideration, other than the conveyance. So based on staff's analysis, they did recommend approval of this application, as did the Planning Commission at the May 16 meeting. That concludes my staff report.
Thank you, Danielle. Any questions for Danielle? Would anybody else like to address this topic? Seeing no one, I'm going to ask the council members whether they are inclined to vote in accordance with the Planning and Zoning Commission recommendation that we approve the rezoning, or the vacation and conveyance, I should say. Thank you.
Yes.
Okay, so I'm going to close the public hearing. Could I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second. Moved by ma'am, second by Thomas. Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Mims?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Teague?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Throg Martin?
Yes.
Cole?
Yes.
Motion carries six to zero. Item 11C, rezoning at the southwest corner of East First Street and South Gilbert Street. This is an ordinance conditionally rezoning 0.20 acres of land located at the southwest corner of East First Street and South Gilbert Street, from intensive commercial CI-12 Riverfront Crossings South Gilbert RFC SG. I'll open the public hearing. Say hi to Danielle again.
Good evening again, Mayor. This is a second rezoning in an additional Riverfront Crossing zoning. This one is the South Gilbert Street Subdistrict. The applicant is Randy Miller in this case, requesting rezoning to Riverfront Crossings South Gilbert District for a small portion of land adjacent to his other approved development called the Crossings. The white hashed square is a smaller property that was recently acquired by the applicant. This shows the area in blue that's already been rezoned to Riverfront Crossing South Gilbert Street District and is the site of the Crossings development, showing the location of the subject property in relationship to that. This is a, the plat exhibit as well, showing the previously approved plat and the parcel or the property that's proposed for rezoning at this time in relation to that. This would be combined into the third phase of the Crossings development. The Riverfront Crossings rezoning would allow for mixed use of the property and would allow for development under the requirements of the South, of the South Gilbert Street District. A little bit of background on the South Gilbert District itself, it allows for a mix of commercial and residential uses, I said. The code does require retail along the storefrontages along South Gilbert Street, also that the buildings be located close to and oriented towards South Gilbert Street. There are improvements to the streetscape that would come along with redevelopment of this property, and the property to the south, which is already seeing some of that happen, is, we did again, look at consistency with the comprehensive plan with this application as it is a rezoning. Again, we looked to the downtown or Riverfront Crossings master plan for comprehensive plan direction, and also to the Form-Based Code, again, since that's the implementation of this project. The Form-Based Code would, the property would be subject to the requirements of the Form-Based Code if it were to develop. It is shown, it was shown for inclusion and redevelopment, redevelopment in that master plan. Again, we looked at compatibility with the existing neighborhood. It's, again, a small part being included in the larger redevelopment, which is already occurring. The area is generally transitioning from a light industrial to general commercial and housing. There are some developments already out of the ground and some that are, if you drive by, obviously, under construction now. Did evaluate traffic and pedestrian circulation. We have been requiring dedication of additional right-of-way along South Gilbert Street as part of redevelopment plans. In this corridor and this parcel would be subject to that as well, and that would facilitate improvements to the streetscape, including improved sidewalks. Next steps, this fits into, as I said, following the master plan and the Form-Based Code. This is, would be the rezoning to, actually rezon the land to a Riverfront Crossings designation. There is a plat that's following this application that's making its way to you through the Planning and Zoning Commission. After that would be completed, then again, site plan review and design review by staff and eventual building permits. So based on staff's analysis, the proposed rezoning is consistent with the comprehensive plan, compatible and/or complementary with the existing neighborhood, would not overburden public facilities. Therefore, staff did recommend approval, and the Planning Commission did as well at its May 16 meeting to you. Also requiring a conditional zoning agreement for the two conditions that you see here, having to do with affordable housing and the dedication of right-of-way along South Gilbert Street. Again, my understanding is they have signed that conditional zoning agreement. So that concludes staff report.
Thank you, Danielle. Any questions? Any questions? Well, you're getting off scot-free tonight. Okay, so I need to ask you again whether you are inclined to vote in accordance with the Planning and Zoning Commission recommendation to approve this rezoning. I'm seeing heads nodding yes, so I'm going to close the public hearing, unless anybody else wants to speak. I don't know if I asked that. Okay, I'm going to close the public hearing. Could I have a motion for first consideration, please?
So moved.
Moved by Teague, seconded by Thomas. Discussion.
I think it's really awesome to see this district continue to develop. As she mentioned, this was a light industrial district, which has its uses, but it didn't really make sense in that location. It's just wonderful to see this, this whole Riverfront Crossings district redevelop in this way, so I'm glad to support this project.
Yeah, this, this particular rezoning will contribute to the construction of a much-improved South Gilbert Street, too, so I think that's important to get these pieces assembled before we can move forward with that.
All right. Anyone else?
Maybe just a quick comment on the right-of-way. One of the long-term planning pieces we're doing with the right-of-way at some point in the distant future is to look at potentially a protected bike lane. Nothing in particular, but that'd be in the very distant future, so that's something exciting to think about.
So there's one thing about this particular, well, my attention's drawn to one particular feature of this proposed rezoning, and I'm going to support the rezoning, so I'm not opposed to that. But I noticed that this particular Riverfront Crossings zone permits buildings up to six stories in height. That's the basic height limit, with a possible bonus up to a maximum of eight stories. This is an instance where I think the Riverfront Crossings height bonus, you know, base heights and height bonuses are just simply excessive. And I really believe, and I've said this in various meetings in the past, that we need to revisit those height, those heights and height bonuses. At some point, it'll be too late, but, and I'm confident that Randy Miller, the developer, is not intending to build structures this high, so I'm not going to make a big stink out of it at this particular point. But just imagine eight-story structures there. I think they would be completely inappropriate for our city. Okay, so any other discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Taylor?
Yes.
Teague?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Throg Martin?
Yes.
Cole?
Yes.
Mims?
Yes.
Motion carries six to zero. Item 11D, Capital Subdivision Preliminary and Final Plat. This is a resolution approving the preliminary and final, and final plats of Capital Subdivision, Iowa City, Iowa. It was deferred from the June 4th meeting, but staff has requested deferral again, so I would like to have a motion to defer to July the 2nd.
So moved.
Second. Moved by ma'am, seconded by Teague. Discussion. Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 11E, Bluegrass Ridge Preliminary Plat. This is a resolution approving a preliminary plat of Bluegrass Ridge subdivision, a 13.76 acre, seven-lot residential subdivision with one outlot located in unincorporated Johnson County, south of American Legion Road and west of Wopsey Avenue Southeast. Could I have a motion to approve, please?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Teague, seconded by Mims. Discussion. Danielle, you going to give us a little background, please?
Yes, I'll give you the overview of this. This one has a name now. It's Bluegrass. It may look familiar to you when I show you the location and the layout. This was Claude and Adam Greiner previously had come before you for rezoning. This is in one of our fringe areas, and we considered it at that time. It's proceeded on to the plating stage with the county, and so it's back before you for that consideration. It's, as you said, a seven-lot residential subdivision located, has been rezoned residential and is located in the county growth area, I'm sorry, fringe area B outside the growth area. It's requested for the subdivision to accommodate a seven-lot subdivision, I said, sorry, and has been reviewed according to our fringe area agreement for such areas. It shows the layout of that subdivision. It will create three new streets, each of which will conform to the city's rural design standards, and so that it's not seven lots with seven driveways onto the main street. Because it's in the county, water and sewer will be provided privately. There'll be an individual lot septic system, and they will share a well. And that is reviewed according to the county's regulations. As far as next steps go, this will then be recommended to the Johnson County Board of Supervisors for their final determination. Based on the policies outlined in the fringe area agreement, staff did recommend approval of the application, as did the planning commission at its June 6th meeting, and I think that concludes my report.
So these are one-acre lots, correct?
They range between one to one and a half acres, yes.
Any other questions for Danielle? About how far outside of Iowa City city limits is it? Do you know?
It's outside the growth boundary. I couldn't, not sure I could give you the exact mileage out to it. I've not measured that.
Okay.
It's within the two-mile boundary, but outside.
The staff report has 1.76 miles east of the eastern city limits.
There you go.
Good, thanks. Okay. Anyone else want to address this topic? Hi there, how are you?
Hello, good.
Thanks for your patience.
Thank you. My name is Gina Landau. I represent Claude and Adam Greiner. I am from MMS Consultants. This is a county subdivision, so it does look a little bit different than you are used to for a city subdivision. We planned ahead for lots purposefully to be over one acre, mainly because if people are looking for lots in the county, if they would like to build a home in the county, they are looking for over one acre. It's very hard to market lots less than that in the county. Along with that, we have to plan ahead for not only the home, construction, driveway, we have to plan for a septic system and an alternative septic system. Septic systems usually last about 20 years, somewhere around in there, so, you know, we all know that we want to be in our home longer than that. So we have to have an alternative area for that septic system. So that is, that's a huge reason as to why the lots are larger, as well as, if you're going to develop, you want to be able to sell your lots. So over one acre to 1.2, 1.25 acre, those are, those are very marketable right now. We do have, and you can't see farther south on the plat, we have accounted for stormwater management. Drainage calculations are being configured. There will be a very nice pond south, so I don't know if you could put the plat up again. So Outlot A to the east will have a dry detention basin on it. There's not enough water that drains that way for us to have anything wet or any water feature, anything. But directly south, so on the southwest side, there will be a nice water, you know, pond, basically. It's a wet detention basin, pond. So basically, Claude Greiner owns the 40 acres south of this. He has given us approval to put the pond and to do stormwater management on that 40 acres. The intention on that 40 acres is still to row crop it on the areas where we're not putting the ponds, of course, but that will accommodate all of the stormwater management that we have for these seven lots. Sensitive areas study has been completed. Archaeology study has been completed per the Johnson County ordinances, so we have followed those rules as well. Like I said, this is a county subdivision, although there are over 80 homes in this area, right in that area, just slight of two miles outside of the city of Iowa City. So it's a nice little residential area.
Is it walkable or bikeable to any services, such as entertainment or anything like that?
Well, you're 1.76 miles, so you'd have to do the 1.76 miles just to get to the city of Iowa City, which is basically right there, where that school is, the new elementary school is. So we are on the outer part of the fringe. I would say not really right now, although American Legion Road, which is where this is, is going to have a brand-new widening, bike lane, everything like that in 2022, is what secondary roads has planned for that. So that might, that might change. It sure might, as well as the city, of course, will extend out farther. So that will definitely change.
Thank you, Gina.
Thank you.
Anyone else? All right, seeing no one, council discussion?
Well, I'm actually opposed to this project. We've had a long discussion tonight about our climate change and our climate action, and part of that is having, reducing auto dependence, and part of that is, is reducing trips for goods and services and encouraging walkability. Obviously, in the rural areas, this is outside the city limits, it's a little bit different. You're not going to have the same density, but this is precisely the sort of low-density exurban development that facilitates excessive auto dependency, so I can't support this project. I mean, just even at the preliminary plat stage, that's going to be my position.
Okay. Anyone else?
I'm going to support this. I think there's, you know, a lot of areas in the county that it makes sense for some residential development. Not everybody wants to live in a city. You know, the, the amount of traffic obviously depends upon people's lifestyles and families or not families, and where they work or don't work, et cetera. But I think, and I would agree, that the marketability out in the county, people who do want to live out there do want some space and do tend to want, you know, an acre or more of land. So even if it was, you know, seven houses on two acres, that's, you know, that's not addressing the transportation issues, but not everybody wants to live in Iowa City or in North Liberty or whatever, and so I think you already have, you know, a lot of residential out there, and to add this in that same area, I think, makes perfect sense.
Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Taylor?
Yes.
Teague?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Throg Martin?
Yes.
Cole?
No.
Mims?
Yes.
Motion carries five to one. Item 11F, Conditional Use Permit, 4059 Isaac Walton League Road Southeast. This is a recommendation to the Johnson County Board of Adjustment regarding a conditional use permit for 4059 Isaac Walton League Road Southeast. I must say, this is the first time I think I've encountered a recommendation concerning Johnson County's Board of Adjustment, but there you go. Could I have a motion to approve, please? So moved. Second. Moved by Cole, seconded by Teague. Discussion. Danielle?
So as the mayor said, this is a very rare application. It is subject to the county's process for reviewing these, which does indicate it needs to come to the city council to make a recommendation to them. It's located in our fringe area agreement, under Area C outside of the city's growth boundary. It's the location of the current sand mining, gravel mining, I believe it is, location. And the applicant in this case is S&amp;G Materials, and they're requesting for a conditional use permit, basically a change to their existing permit that they have with the county. The request, they have a history of establishing this use there under their conditional use permit, dating back to 2000 with some changes over the years. The requested change tonight is to alter their hours of operation. Currently, they operate 7:00 AM to 5:00 PM, Monday through Friday. They're asking to increase that to 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM during March through April and October through December, essentially to respond to the need for additional materials occasionally for floods and severe weather events. During their operation, they say they use an electric dredge and one large front-end loader on the, on the site. To date, the city does not have any concerns about the current operation. We've not heard any complaints. There are existing conditions on that conditional use permit that they already have that will be carried forward, so those will continue to govern their operations as well. Because the property's not within the city's growth area and it's not likely to be annexed into the city, we don't have any concerns, as I said, in addition to not receiving any complaints about the operation. Here's an overview of their operation, essentially, if you are interested in the layout. It's not open to the public, so should not impact anyone there. This would be a letter of recommendation going to the Johnson County Board of Adjustment. So staff did base our analysis on that fringe area agreement and recommended approval, as did the planning commission to you tonight. That concludes my staff report.
Anyone else want to address this topic? Thank you, Danielle. Hey, Liz. You again.
I'm Liz Moss. I'm with Transition Ecology. S&amp;G is my client. I'm their consultant on this application. This spring, my client called me actually and said, "What's the weather going to be like?" And I said, "What do you mean?" And he said, "Well, it's flooding in western Iowa. Is it going to flood here?" And I said, "Well, I don't know." He said, "Because we don't have enough sand to make sandbags or HESCO barriers." Because the winter was such a horrible, long-lasting winter. Again, climate issues, right here, we back to the same topic, right? The, the sand that had been mined previously had to be used and distributed for both county and city municipal, municipal uses on roads. And so the extension of the hours is just to provide a little bit of a buffer zone in their ability to be able to actually mine material so that it's available for the reasons that we need it, especially those weather-related ones. It's challenging to mine at the end of the year when the water is frozen. They have a floating dredge. If the water's frozen, they can't mine. And then in the spring, if the water's really high, they actually can't mine either because they can't get their equipment in and around where they need to be able to operate. So this is trying to build some of that resiliency and planning ahead, almost more from a emergency management situation than, than anything. It would, so the regular hours of operation, it's not going to change the amount of truck traffic that's on the road. I know there's sometimes a concern with that. It would only change just two people, one guy driving a loader and one guy running the dredge for a couple of hours longer each day during these periods of time. Thank you.
Thank you, Liz. Anyone else? All right, seeing no one else, council discussion? I think I'm hearing a lot of silent ditto's. Not that I've ever heard a silent ditto before, but... All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, item 12, Riverfront Crossings Park Phase Four. This is a resolution approving project manual and estimate of cost for the construction of the, of the Riverfront Crossings Park Phase Four project, establishing amount of bid security to accompany each bid, directing city clerk to post notice to bidders, and fixing time and place for receipt of bids. I'll open the public hearing. Hi, Julie.
Good evening. More exciting news about Riverfront Crossings. This is Phase Four of construction. Can't resist showing you the grand opening flyer. Make sure you tell all your friends and family, July 20th, the grand opening. This Phase Four of the project happens here within the traffic circle, so for the grand opening, and now when you're out there, it's a big green open space. We have a really intriguing idea to get it updated, and at the same time relocate the Snelson sculpture from Terrell Mill Park, and now my computer's saying, "Hold on, we're updating," so you have pictures in your packet. It moves the sculpture, the four modular piece structure, to the park, elevates it up on pillars at the north end of the traffic circle. It provides with a wall that will provide the main signage for the park entrance and kind of, and dress up that front entrance to the park, along with a walkway path and some seating and landscaping in that traffic circle area. Part of this is funded through the public art and loo fees provided by the developer at 707 South Dubuque Street, and I'm sorry, I can't bring up the rest of the pictures, but it's really neat.
So you have a recalcitrant computer up there.
Yeah, I think now it's going to let me go. Yeah, there we go. So there's the photo of it. Work would not start until after the July 20th grand opening. The last thing we want to do is have that all torn up for the grand opening. It will take place through the fall, construction will. That will mean some closing of the park entrance at points during the construction, so that's kind of a downside. We'll get the new park open and then have to close the parking lot for four or five days at a days at a time. But we'll work with the contractor on that. So I can answer any questions.
Just excited to keep it moving, see if more advancements there.
Beautiful.
Was, was it always intended to be elevated like that? Or is that?
It is. If you, if you do a computer, an internet search of Kenneth Snellson's work, most of his sculptures are elevated. So I don't know the original intent of this particular piece, but this fits with most of his, the rest of his artwork, so.
Okey doke. Thank you, Julie. Anyone else want to address this topic? Seeing no one else, I'm going to close the public hearing. Could I have a motion, please?
So move.
Second.
Moved by Teague, seconded by Thomas. Discussion.
Well, it seems like this piece is finally found a final home.
So I, I do want to mention a few things. Maybe this is really for Jeff, what I'm going to say now. Several, well, part of it's for everybody, but several days ago, when the Iowa Flood Center was having its 10th birthday over at the hydrological laboratory, I ran into Senator Rob Hoag. He was one of the people who spoke. And he asked me whether we had any, I don't know why he asked, but how, whether we had any projects that we would want to point to as really successful flood recovery projects. Of course, I said, "Yes, we do, absolutely." And I mentioned the grand openings we have in mind for Riverfront Crossings Park and for the Gateway Project. And he said, "Please invite, make sure I'm invited for that." But that makes me think also that if, if we haven't already got this in mind, we should invite Governor Reynolds. Maybe, well, our local legislative delegation for sure and Representative Lopes' office for sure. But maybe some other key House and Senate people in terms of the state House and Senate, like chairman of, chairpersons of committees or whatever, but definitely Governor Reynolds.
Okay.
I mean, I'm just speaking for myself here. I don't know if, you know, the council's got to support this stuff. Okay. Beyond that, looking forward to further progress and happy to see this. Okay, any further discussion? No. Roll call, please.
Teague?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Throgmorton?
Yep.
Cole?
Yes.
MEMs?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Motion carries six to zero. Item 13, Rochester Avenue Sidewalk Infill. This is a resolution approving project manual and estimate of cost for the construction of the Rochester Avenue Sidewalk Infill Project, establishing amount of bid security to accompany each bid, directing city clerk to post notice to bidders, and fixing time and place for receipt of bids. I'll open the public hearing. Is anybody from staff going to address this? I don't think it's necessary, but I was just wondering if somebody was going to. Ron, hi, Ron.
Good evening, Ron, Kentucky Public Works Director. This will install a four-foot wide sidewalk on the north side of Rochester from St. Thomas Court to our ground storage reservoir. It's a four-foot wide sidewalk. It's, it's a piece that had come up on our infill program. We have had a neighborhood meeting. There's four properties that are impacted, and they were all on board with the installation.
Great.
Thank you.
Thanks. Anyone else want to address this topic? Seeing no one, I'm going to close the public hearing. Could I have a motion to approve the motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
What did I say? Motion to approve the motion? Oh, well. All right, moved by MEMS, seconded by Thomas. Discussion.
Well, it's a nice, important infill project, and I'm happy that the four residents supported it. Sometimes it seems we don't get that kind of support.
Indeed.
Especially when they have to now start doing snow removal.
That's right.
They don't have to pay for it.
And they may have long frontages.
Yeah, they probably do.
No further discussion. Roll call, please.
Thomas?
Yes.
Throgmorton?
Yes.
Cole?
Yes.
MEMs?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Teague?
Yes.
Motion carries six to zero. Item 14, 2019 Asphalt Resurfacing. This is a resolution approving project manual and estimate of cost for the construction of the Asphalt Resurfacing 2019 Project, establishing amount of bid security to accompany each bid, directing city clerk to post notice to bidders, and fixing time and place for receipt of bids. I'll open the public hearing. Not seeing anyone. I'm going to close the public hearing. Could I have a motion to approve the resolution, please?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by MEMS, seconded by Teague. Discussion.
Well, it's always good to get more of these projects done, and I'm looking forward, and I think we all are, to the study that's going to give us a better plan of where we're going to do road repairs and asphalt overlays to. The biggest complaint I continue to hear is, is our streets, is the condition of our streets. And so to, to get a plan in place and figure out the financing so that we can really work on improving the, the streets across the city, that's obviously no criticism of our staff. It's just getting the money and the planning and resources in place so that we can do it on a little more frequent and/or expeditious process, so.
Any other discussion?
Now, one of these projects, Jim, you had mentioned, I think, at our last meeting, would entail removing parking. Was this, am I, am I getting this correct?
That's right. It was South Governor's Street, one, two blocks of South Governor or something like that.
Jason Reichert, Engineering. Yeah, the current plan sheet for the pavement markings on Dodge showed a buffered bike lane as well. And we have discussed internally, including the, the recommendations of the Bike Master Plan and a buffered bike lane on Governor as well. That would be subject to an upcoming public meeting that we're going to have to kind of discuss the removal of parking. And, and kind of based on how that goes, we'll determine how we move forward with those improvements.
Okay. So action's not going to be taken on that particular street segment?
Right now, there's...
Until after you have the conversation, then see how that goes.
Yeah, exactly. And it's shown, it's shown in the current Dodge Street Plan that's included in the plans that are approved tonight, but again, subject to, to that public hearing. But those improvements are consistent with the Bike Master Plan improvements, so.
Would, would you happen to know if, when the Bike Master Plan was being developed, if, if that was discussed in specifically with respect to the loss of parking?
I believe so.
Yes, there's really not room to do both, so that would have been part of that discussion.
And there wasn't any, at that time anyway, any?
No, but there wasn't necessarily an effort to go inform those residents. So unless they were engaged because of their interest in the bike plan, they probably didn't know, which is why we need to go through the public meeting process.
Okay.
Great, thanks, Jason.
Thank you.
Okay. Any further discussion?
Well, I'm glad that was cleared up because I...
Yeah, yeah, thanks. I'd, that slipped my mind. Okay, hearing no further discussion. Roll call, please.
Throgmorton?
Yes.
Cole?
Yes.
MEMs?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Teague?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Motion carries six to zero. Item 15, Hate Crime. This is an ordinance amending Title VIII entitled Police Regulations, Chapter Five entitled Miscellaneous Offenses, to add hate crime as a criminal offense. This is second consideration?
Move second consideration.
Second.
Moved by MEMS, seconded by Thomas. Discussion.
I want to move that the rule requiring the ordnance, that ordinances must be considered and voted on for the passage at two council meetings prior to the meeting at which it is to be finally passed, passed, be suspended, that the second consideration and vote be waived, and that the ordinance be voted on for final passage at this time.
Sue, is it okay to do it in that sequence?
Right. Probably the first motion needs to be...
Rescinded?
Yes.
Yeah, and then we'll deal with...
Right, right.
So would that be all right with yous?
First motion and second, yeah.
Yeah. Would you both agree to rescinding that first motion?
Yes.
Okay, so we have this motion to, what's the term?
Condense.
Condense the two readings. Okay, and it was moved by Teague, seconded by anybody here?
Second.
Seconded by MEMS. All right, discussion on the, the motion to condense readings, the second and third readings.
I don't have any problem with it. I think certainly this has gotten very wide public support. I think it's gotten wide support from, you know, from the council. Typically, the issues where we do not entertain a motion to condense is where there is some controversy or a feeling that there hasn't maybe been enough public information out there. I think certainly with our last meeting and some of the press coverage, I think people have an opportunity, have had an opportunity to really learn about this. So I have no problem with our condensing the second, third readings.
Any other comment? I can say I received one fairly angry phone call about a week ago, but that's it. And I've heard from one of our local reporters that there's been active discussion. Was, hmm, Mark? No, I can't ask you that. Never mind. I, I heard that there was some active discussion, but maybe I'm confusing this topic with some other topics, so let me just withdraw what I just said. Anybody else want to say anything else? Okay, I, I see no reason not to condense the readings.
Agreed.
Okay, so there's a motion on the fore. We need a roll call on this, don't we? Okay, so roll call, please.
Cole?
Yes.
MEMs?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Teague?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Throgmorton?
Yes. Motion carries six to zero. So now we need the, why don't you go ahead and make the...
Move final consideration.
Second.
Moved by MEMS, seconded by Cole. Discussion. It could be, you know, there's some people who've been waiting. I should give them a chance to express a view at this point if they want to.
It's horrible when you have to fight with a reverend to speak first. Good evening. My name is Jeffrey Morgan, and tonight I am privileged to be speaking on behalf of IC Compassion. I know some of you are very familiar with IC Compassion, but for those of you that aren't, it's a nationally-registered immigration center. We offer many, many community services, like a Wednesday night community meal, ESL and citizenship, citizenship classes, sewing classes. We have a free legal clinic every week, and we have two food pantries that operate at least two times a week. So we're definitely a community outreach organization. And one thing that we recognize, as I'm sure that you all know, is that Iowa City is a city of diversity, and that's what makes us shine as a community. And as one of the previous speakers, Liz, alluded to, we're seeing a lot more influx of immigrants, refugees, and people that maybe look a little differently than we do. And I think that's great. And one of IC Compassion's goals is to reach out to the community, to welcome them inside our doors and to make a presence within Iowa City. We are also partners with the Church of the Nazarene, who has a multicultural congregations. We have six different congregations. We have a community in open door, which involves people of all colors and ethnicities and economic backgrounds, a Hispanic congregation, two African congregations, a Chinese congregation, to, to name just a few. But, and I heartily invite you, twice a year, we have all the congregations together for a meal. I have never, ever tasted such good food, and I, and I welcome you and invite you to the next time that happens because you will not regret it. And I, and I believe that. On the weekend, the March 2nd, our compassionate ministry center and church was assaulted, if that's a word, with graffiti, with Nazi symbols and slogans that slurred one of our, both of our African congregations and the people that attend our church and our community center. We were rocked to our core because as we open our doors to the community, anyone can walk in, but to come in and cover at night and to face our building and to frighten our people, that's unacceptable. We, we didn't know what to do. We were torn. We got to, got to work, and we cleaned up the vandalism because of wonderful people with the interfaith community. We had a community vigil where over 200 people attended and expressed their solidarity that this kind of hatred in Iowa City can't stand. This was not a drunken prank done by teenagers or college students or people who are just bored and wanted to do something. This was an intended attack on a culture. In reading this ordinance, IC Compassion feels very strongly that it should be passed. We appreciate the council's support with this. Stepping aside in my role as, as chairperson of the Board of IC Compassion and talking as private citizen Jeffrey Morgan, I do, I am troubled by the distinction on the third page of the, the comments where it says that it would be, for example, assuring investigation and evidence supporting the citation allow for the prosecution of a person with the intent to intimidate, annoy, threaten, or alarm without legitimate purpose, places a hateful note on the door of another because the person is African-American. That's the spirit of the ordinance. I have no problem with that. The next part is, I would not, for example, prohibit the placement of it. It's okay to be white sticker posting pillar downtown or on leaflets for the neighborhood. The latter is protected speech under the First Amendment. I get it. Free, free speech is, is so important to this country and our community. However, I think you have to look at intent. You have, it's, there has been much public discussion and in the news about leaflets that were included in the Little Village newspaper. It did not say that it was, it was okay to be white. It said to love your race. And the sponsors of that were a neo-Nazi organization. If you wanted, free speech is fine, but you have to think about intent. What was the intent of this? What is the intent of, of the national alliance? Is to spread fear? Is to spread discomfort? And make people of, of different nationalities, different ethnicities, different cultures feel uncomfortable in their home community? And so even though it might not be included in this ordinance as, as written, I would just ask that going forward and looking at some of these things as they happen, to take maybe a closer look about revising that. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Jeffrey. Jeffrey, please do formally invite us to that, the next multi-congregational event that you just described. Yeah, thanks. Anyone else?
Pastor Anthony Smith, New Creations International Church. I'm also the chair of Johnson County Interfaith Coalition. First of all, I want to thank, thank you for coming and supporting, supporting the, the ordinance. Thank you, Iowa City, Council, City Council. Thank everyone that has, that has, that has, has supported Iowa City Police Department. It's, it's, it's a must-have. I don't know if I said the last time I stood up here that our, our church also is a, we hold a, an African congregation. We have our, our non-denominational congregation. And at, and at the time, we had a Hispanic congregation in our, in our building. And we had a instance where a individual who we didn't catch came and defecated in our, in our lower level. The same instance that happened at the, at the, at the mosque. And so we know that there's, that that hate... And so we know that there's, that that hate is, is, is out there. And, and I believe that this, this ordinance is putting, is putting our best foot in the right direction. There's more that we can do. There's more education that we have to do. There's more things that we, that we have to do. But this, this ordinance is putting, is putting our best foot forward. It's our best first step. And, and I would encourage the council to continue to, to look at and work with us and let's, let's work together as a community as we have in the past to work on other, on other measures that will, that will discourage these, these motivations of hate in our city. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Anyone else?
Mark Priest, resident of Iowa City. Bruce, I just want to thank you for condensing this and to help us all understand how expeditious we need to be about this. I was with Pastor Anthony Smith. How long ago was it when we met and prayed and just remembered it was the groundswell of what became Johnson County Interfaith Coalition? And I really appreciate your ears and eyes and awareness and quick action. Thanks so much.
Thanks, Mark. Anyone else? All right, seeing no one, council discussion? I am really excited to be able to support this ordinance. Very pleased to be able to do it. It's just, it's heartbreaking to see the kinds of actions that lead us to be, feel like we need to adopt this kind of ordinance. You'd like to think that there weren't such people in our city, but there are. And there are people outside our city who come here to kind of jerk us around and scare us, make us afraid. But we aren't. So I'm really pleased to be able to support this ordinance. Roll call, please.
Mims?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Teague?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Throgmorton?
Yes.
Cole?
Yes.
Motion carries six to zero. Item 16, deer management plan. This is a resolution approving the long-term deer management plan for the years 2019 to 2024. Could I have a motion to approve, please?
So moved, second.
Moved by Teague, seconded by Cole. Is anybody going to make any kind of presentation, Jeff?
We can just give a-
Just very brief.
A very brief overview. This is the result of a work session that you had earlier this year. A quick reminder, we did go to the Natural Resources Commission twice last year in 2018 for a request to thin the deer population. Both of those requests were denied. We are prepping to go back in July for a third request. And the plan that you have outlined combines one year of sharpshooting, one season of sharpshooting, probably a couple of different times within that season, followed by four years of non-lethal management. The plan was put together from staff with city attorney's office and the police department. And we had some really extraordinary help from the Iowa City Deer Friends in compiling the non-lethal strategies that you see contained in the plan. So we'd be happy to try to answer any questions that you have. We're looking for your approval. After we get your approval, we will formally submit it to the state and then again, ask for their approval in July.
Okeydoke. Would anyone like to address this topic?
I'm Caroline Dieterly. And I think that the principal objection I have to this is that in a sense, this plan is not managing the population. What it does is it lets the deer repopulate after the sharpshooting of this coming winter. I really don't expect the commission to approve this because it isn't management. It's more or less toleration. And I really don't understand why the staff, the poor staff, was put in the position of having to write this policy or this plan, which is sure to fail. It's a lot of wasted time. And I think that, I find it hard to understand why the people in charge here don't understand that there's more at, you know, at stake here than whether cars get hit or deer get hit by cars and the so-called landscaping. I don't wonder, I wonder whether any of you have looked into the biology of prions that are causing the cervid wasting disease? Because if you did, and if you read the website that I, that was managed, that was mentioned in the op-ed that I helped write for the Press Citizen of the veterinary association's, you know, take on what deer can carry in terms of diseases and the vectors that go with it, you would agree with me that something has to be done, even if you don't care about the understory vegetation in the parks, which is another issue. The bare-faced fact is, is that the numbers of deer must be reduced. And the only way to do that is to kill some. That's the long and short of it. And until we kill some, we're not going to be successful in doing anything for the public health threats that are presented by these deer. And I really urge you to take the time to look at these references and rethink this issue and come up with another plan. I have here on my phone, you know, a letter from somebody who lives in Ames, who is another person who's a biology person. And at Ames, they have got both shotgun shooting and bow hunting. And they kill a lot of deer, and they manage the situation. We have let things get so far out of hand that I think that we must use sharpshooting, but after that, we could have the combination of shooting and bow, bow hunting, both, and propose that to the commission and cite the, the plan for Ames and ask why they can't give us the same plan that Ames is able, is able to take. I don't think that anybody has really looked or demanded from anybody any kind of statistics about how many, you know, cities in Iowa are managing their deer populations by hunting and in what way, to find out how many are really satisfied with bow hunting. I think that someone just saying so, you know, isn't the same thing as having the statistics of actually the numbers. We don't have the numbers for the numbers of deer there are in Iowa either, nor do we know, you know, how many bow hunters are licensed or how much money they make from the licenses. But I'm here to tell you that if nothing is done about the cervid wasting disease, there soon will be no hunting licenses because we'll simply be out there trying to kill as many as possible to prevent this disease going any farther. So I urge you to redo this and come up with a realistic plan to reduce the numbers. And I know there are people in town who don't want to kill anything, but this just not is a realistic attitude in this situation. Thank you.
Thank you, Caroline. Anyone else want to address this?
Erin Irish, Iowa City. You might recall that I spoke the last time we discussed this. And I wanted to start by taking a little bit of a perspective since I served on the committee that considered this last year. And when we were, after the first application was denied and we were charged with coming, having input. So I think we were a little bit blindsided by the change in the makeup of the NRC, the group that grants permits because in the past, sharpshooting was fine. And so we operated with the assumption that sharpshooting, if we chose to manage deer population, would be something that would work. And so the public hearing that we had was built around that assumption. We had Tony DiNicolà, this expert who did the sharpshooting before, come in and give a very detailed presentation where he talked about various means, saying that sterilization technology's not quite there. Sharpshooting, in his view, was far more humane than bow hunting. But I think that there might have been a little bit of a conflict of interest. Now, he claimed that he was making enough money. He didn't need our business. He would be fine if we chose not to hire him. But I still felt like the, the conversation was directed towards sharpshooting or not controlling. And there was not a formal count of the kinds of comments that we got from the public. But I think that the committee, when we met again afterwards, pretty much agreed that it was about three to one in favor of controlling the deer. And, you know, that really, the only way that, that was presented was through sharpshooting. And then, so that was what the application was. But if we had had a, maybe a more balanced presentation where we had bow hunting and actual data to say how effective it would be, then I think that, that we would have been able to tease out a little bit of the attitude of sharpshooting versus bow hunting versus leave the poor animals alone would have been, we would have gotten a clear feat assessment. Because I feel like there's, we have these two choices. We either don't kill any animals, or we are forced to abide by the new set of rules that we have with that current committee. Now, the, I want to point out that, that committees, membership changes every year or two years. There's new people appointed to that. So it could be that right now, bow hunting is something that they, like, that's the only way that we're going to be allowed to kill a deer. But in future years, and they want a long-term management plan, in future years, they might have a different view where sharpshooting would be something that would be permitted. But I don't know if you had a chance to, to look at the numbers that I figured out a couple of days ago, two things. If we take, if we are successful by having a couple rounds of sharpshooting in this winter and get, actually get numbers down to 10 per square mile, which is a pretty, pretty substantial goal, and then not do anything, and I, so I just, you know, back of an old envelope, I calculated, so if you have five, if you have 10 deer, five of them are does, they're already pregnant, so they, because they're reproductively competent at year one, so, so right away, so we will have five fawns in the spring, and assuming conservatively, two of them are females, and so that now we have seven females per, per square mile. And so you can go through that. And by year five, we have 69 deer per square miles. We're back to the same overpopulation we have right now. So I, I understand that there was the sentiment that we need to come up with a non-lethal strategy, but I am completely with Caroline in saying, why waste everyone's time? Let's be sensible about this and come up with a plan that we know from previous conversations with the current commission, that committee, that, of doing something that they would, that they would approve. And the second calculation I did was thinking about, because the, one of the measures was we put up fences, or you give us advice on how we could put up our own fences. And I have a little lot in town. It's on 90 by 100. And even if I just did the perimeter, plus I went around the outside of my driveway so my car could get to the garage and back, that's 420 feet of fencing. And the internet tells me cheap fence, average $25 a foot. That's $10,000 for a cheap pine fence that I would have to paint every year. And that's so, you know, my block alone would, would cover the cost of sharpshooting for a year. So sharpshooting sounded expensive until I started calculating how much that cost is transferred to each of the citizens who want to protect their gardens. So I'll stop here.
Erin, excuse me, I'd like to ask you a question.
Sure. I forgot to write my name.
What I hear you saying is pitch the proposed deer plan. Toss it out the window. All right. Do you see any way it could be altered to help ensure that the deer population does not suddenly grow back to the-
One idea I had was to work with the DNR to have, to increase the amount of hunting in the perimeter of Iowa City. Like, give out, the city could buy some deer tags so that a deer hunter who wants to take more than one animal, what might be encouraged to hunt around here, and that at least could draw some of the animals from the perimeter. You know, if we decrease that population, there would probably be some exodus into now that cleared space. But I, I have no problem with an urban bow hunt either.
Okay, thank you. Hi there.
Hi. My name is Gene Schumkeviak. A couple of things, just to the city manager. Why were we denied on the previous plans that we submitted to the state?
A general aversion to sharpshooting from the Natural Resources Commission.
So they do, they, and what was their, did they give you a plan? Because I'm confused why this group has a say in how we manage our deer here, yet they don't give us a plan. So do you understand how that works? And is there anybody on the council from our vicinity, from this neck of the woods?
Hi. I was at both the meetings. The seven members, you can find their names and addresses on, on their website. Nobody's sort of in the, that I think is in the Cedar Rapids and Cora, for example, area that I recall, but I don't want to quote that for sure. But under state law, it's the commission that has to give authority to, to shoot the deer or to, to bow hunt. And so if the city wants to engage in sharpshooting, we must get their permission. And as Jeff indicated, they would not agree to that without a bow hunt. That's-
So the bow hunt was the sticking point?
Yeah, that seemed to be the bow, that seemed to be the sticking point.
Did they give you any numbers on other towns? So from my understanding, Coraville has a bow hunt.
Yes.
And I talked to John Lindell, and he said they've never had any complaints or problems. I also contacted some, one of the members of the council. They're very difficult to get a hold of. They don't answer your emails. But the one person I did get to talk to said, I asked, are there complaints in Ames and Des Moines and all the areas that I think, how many were there?
102.
There's 102 of these things going on with bow hunting in the state. They have, they, he said they had no complaints. Did any of you guys verify that or talk to any of the surrounding areas that have bow hunts?
Captain Campbell spoke, is it okay if we go back and forth with this?
Yeah.
Okay. Captain Campbell spoke with people in Cedar Rapids and Coraville, and the indication he received from both those cities that there were not complaints.
Okay. All right. So just getting back to, to a couple of things. I'm a veterinarian. And what Caroline was talking about, the science is sort of out on, on chronic wasting. But the one thing they do know is that when you have a high density of deer, it's spread from the urine. The prions are, are spreading the urine. And it is a possibility that that could develop in the herd. Whether it jumps to humans or not, who knows? So that's just something that's possible. But by us having a high density here, we're contributing to the problem that the whole state- Whether it jumps to humans or not, who knows? So, that's just something that's possible. But by us having a high density here, we're contributing to the problem that the whole state will have. And I guess the DNR could, you know, address that. But I think we do need to keep the population down, not have it go down to 10 per square mile, and then jump up over four years and whack it back down. I think we've got to knock the level down and then do something to maintain it. I don't know the numbers on bow hunting, how that maintains it. And I'd like to see those before we put the proposal on, find out why we have to abide by these council rules. And it just, it's an appointment, like Erin said, they're going to change every few years. The other thing with, other diseases are transmitted. If you put a fence around your yard, like Erin wants to do, I don't want it, you can stop the deer, but you do not stop the rodents from entering your property and allowing the lime ticks to come into your yard and infect your pets and people. We have both Lyme and something called anaplasmosis in this area. It's very prevalent out at Kent Park. Serious illness in some people, dogs, I'd say, maybe 25% of dogs that get infected will show disease. Humans, it's a little bit higher, but some people respond very, very poorly, and it's very hard to control them.
Gene, excuse me, we need to have a limit on the amount of time individuals...
Okay. But I'm just, okay, so the point is that this is not just...
Be very concise, please.
It's not just a predation on our flora, but it's also a public health problem, and, you know, in addition to car accidents and that sort of thing. Because I can't find how many deer were killed in car accidents in Iowa City. How do you find that out?
We have data about that. Thank you. No, no thanks, Caroline.
...because they say no complaints, do they mean that they don't have any people complaining about the deer, or that they don't have any complaints about the bow hunting? What is no complaints?
Is there anybody else who wanted to address this topic? All right. Apparently, nobody else wants to address the topic. Council discussion. I'll tell you some things I'm thinking. When I read the plan, I was surprised to see that there was, there were no apparent indications about how the deer population would be kept at the level resulting from the initial sharpshooting. There's got to be something. So, I'm just saying, I just read the thing, you know, yesterday, I guess, so I was surprised to see that. And I'm pretty skeptical the NRC would approve that. So, I think we need to have something in the plan that would, some trigger, like, you know, we do, we do the initial sharpshooting, we do the head count the next year, we can try these non-lethal steps, but a head count. And if it goes above a certain trigger head count, we have to do something, and we have to show the NRC that we are going to do something. That's my first sort of gut response.
I have to agree. I mean, the fact that, you know, the current proposal really has no means of controlling the deer population after year one seems to be a non-starter. So, you know, Erin's concept was an interesting one, and Caroline mentioning the work that is being done in Ames suggests that some effort to try to incorporate possibly a hybrid of sharpshooting and bow hunting after we get the population down through sharpshooting seemed like a reasonable proposal to me. It does seem, we can't move forward with anything until we get the commission's approval. So, and it sounds very much like that approval will not be given without some five-year plan which controls the population, and that bow hunting is going to have to be part of that solution. So, it seems to me we need to revise the plan to allow for the possibility of bow hunting. And I like the idea of a combination of bow hunting and sharpshooting in the subsequent years after year one. With some, you know, if you're looking at the numbers each year, you'll have some idea of what may need to be done to control the population.
Well, I think all of us were really reluctant to authorize any form of bow hunting, especially within city limits. However, it seemed like the NRC made it very clear that that was going to be a condition precedent to authorizing the ability to do the sharpshoot. And so, very reluctantly during our last work session, that was the position that I took, is that I did not want to do that, but I felt we needed to do that to control the long-term population. We've talked about the numbers in terms of the nuisance potential, we've also talked about the safety component. Fortunately, we haven't had any, at least I'm aware of, fatalities or physical, personal injuries in the city, so we've lucked out. But as you point out in other contexts with street safety, we don't want to wait for the first to happen. And certainly outside the city, that is a major issue. Carolyn brings up the question of communicable diseases. Fortunately for now, there is no transmission that I'm aware of from deer to humans, but it's certainly a greater likelihood. So, certainly, I love wildlife, but as a lot of people have pointed out, that the predator prey is part of, you know, a billion years of evolution, and we don't have that at this point. So unfortunately, we have to be the predator, unfortunately, and I don't like using that metaphor, but that's just the reality. That said, this is the plan before us, and would it be possible to amend it prior to the July meeting? Do we have enough time?
The July meeting is on the 11th, so that's after our next meeting.
So...
But the packet deadline is before your meeting. It's next Tuesday, or next Thursday, I can't remember. So, to get on the July 11 agenda, you have to have something approved by either next Tuesday or next Thursday.
And when's their next meeting?
It's the second Thursday of the month, so August 12th, 12th, whatever.
So, if it were rejected, again, we'd be able to do a modification. So, I think my position is, is a lot of the deer friends have done some really good non-lethal approaches as well. Let's present it as is. If it's rejected, I think unfortunately, we will have to look at the bow hunting as a component.
I think that's pretty obvious. If they reject this, they will say, you're not going to get anywhere unless you do bow hunting.
Yeah. So, but let's just move forward with it, is my point.
Boy, this is really hard for me. I'm going to do a 180 on the bow hunt. I have not been supportive of bow hunting at all, and I don't like the idea of the bow hunting. But we def, I totally agree that we have to do something about the deer herd for many different reasons. I mean, people have talked about public health, we've talked about car accidents, we've talked about the understory, we've talked about the health of the deer herd itself. I think it's just unquestionable, when you look at the numbers that we have and the density that we have, we have to do something. And I, it seems to me that the NRC unfortunately has made it very clear that without a bow hunt component, they won't, they won't approve the sharpshoot. So, and, you know, Erin made clear that, you know, the members of that commission change every year. And so, you know, there would also be the possibility of trying to go back and amend it later on to replace the bow hunting with more sharpshooting. I'm really concerned about the fact that we do sharpshooting for one year, and I think the odds of getting us down to the density that we want is probably pretty slim. And from the bit that I've read, my understanding is that the bow hunting isn't really going to do a whole lot in terms of actual population reduction. So, I would support, at this point, that we amend the plan to include bow hunting in years two through five.
So, we'll have to process that here in a second. I want to ask a question, though. There have been, there's been mention of Ames and Corleville in particular, about what they are doing with regard to bow hunting. Can we obtain that information? If we haven't done it already, can we obtain that information in a reasonable time?
That was in the packet last time we were here in April. That's when Bill Campbell had communicated with Corleville and Cedar Rapids. And I know that information was in that memo. I don't believe Bill has reached out to Ames, but we can certainly gather that information. But, and I don't have that memo unfortunately in front of me.
I'm reviewing the Ames deer management website now. There's no mention of sharpshooting, and I don't believe that anybody else was sharpshooting. He maybe have done shotgun hunts in the past. They're not advertising that like they are their bow hunts, but shotgun would be like a shotgun season hunting. It would not be professional.
Yes, it's not a professional, that's the distinction, yes.
So, and that is, that is an option. I don't know that too many people will, too many cities would do shotgun season hunting, but that's something we can look at. So, the information's public. You can go on the NRC website and look at all the deer management zones in the state, and look at the areas that have been approved.
Yeah, well, I don't particularly want to go up there with a plan that I know is going to be rejected. So, right now, I'm agreeing with Susan and with Rockney's initial inclination, I think, that we need to build some amount of bow hunting into this, and I think it'd be wise to learn from Ames and learn from Corleville, and try to fit it into our context the best that we can. So, that's where I am right at the moment. I don't know what you all are thinking.
I agree with that, too. And I initially, of course, I'm an animal lover, too, and wasn't against any sort of method. But then, the sharpshooting, when I, the numbers, especially when I saw a deer on the edge of Benton Street, right near a block away from where the new development is going to be, it's like I realized that there's no part of this city, any neighborhood, that's immune to them. They're everywhere. And so, the population does need to be diminished. And I wasn't a fan of bow hunting, because we'd heard from a lot of people that it's ineffective and not very efficient, and, you know, these deers, horror stories of the deers running around with arrows, broken arrows in their bodies. But it obviously has helped, and it would be good to hear, like, the effectiveness in the Corleville area. But as it comes to population reduction, I think, my personal opinion is that this, the commission is going to laugh at the wording in some of this, because, like, under the non-lethal management, it says, the city plans to manage its deer population through non-lethal means. But the first two things, deer-proof fencing, as Ms. Irish mentioned, and landscaping and gardening, that's putting the onus on the members of the community to do things. So, it's not really what the city is doing. Of course, you know, putting the signage up and reducing speed limits, et cetera, preventing the accidents, but that's not managing the population. It's not, it's not thinning them out. So, I think we do need to put a little more teeth into it.
Yeah, so, could you amend your proposed amendment to...
I do want to comment.
Oh, Bruce has it.
Sorry, my bad.
Yeah, sorry about that. So, when we spoke about this in April, I thought a part of the reason why three of the councilors were going to Des Moines was to talk to the NRC, along with staff, to just say, hey, you know, we want to kill the deer, really get down the population. And so, one way to do that is through sharpshooting and doing bow hunting, as we've had presentations about, the success rate is not good, and we have deer running around the city, or, you know, that are injured. And so, I am proposing that we, as I understood it, we were going to wait until after the July meeting, because I understood from Simon, I believe, that we can submit, we're not nearing deer season, or maybe it was Bill Campbell, I don't know who. We're not, we have time. So, the first step was to go and talk in July, and then from there, we'll come back as councilors and give kind of our feel as to where they might be, if there's any wiggle room. So, that was kind of my understanding. The other understanding that I had was, whatever plan we submitted, we may want to submit, let's say, what's currently proposed, and then we come next year and find out that it wasn't very successful, and then we plead to the NRC that these are our results, we were not that successful, will you grant another year? And just have those communications almost on an annual basis, where we are resubmitting our requests for sharpshooting.
Yeah, but they've said they want a five-year plan.
We would give them a five-year plan. We, well, my understanding was, we would give them a five-year plan, something that is going to get approved. Now, I'm personally not, I'm not okay with bow hunting personally, but what's been proposed by the city staff, you know, that we can come back in a year to do. Potentially, this will get approved, what the city staff has in the plan right now.
I don't know. It sounded, the way I interpreted what staff came back from the NRC meeting was, if there wasn't bow hunting in it, they wouldn't approve the sharpshooting. Was that pretty...
That is our read, and that's what we communicated last, in your last work session when we took this up. So, that's still our belief. But the communication, the direction that we got from you at the last work session was, let's try sharpshooting, one more non-lethal strategy, and we purposely targeted July so that if it was rejected, we could come back and still possibly get a sharpshoot done this way.
I thought I understood that an NRC, I think the chair of the NRC said, well, you know, we could, we'd be okay with some sharpshooting to start off with, but we need, we need to make sure the herd is kept low, and that's going to mean bow hunting. That's what I thought was coming our way. So, yeah, so I think we need, basically, to amend this plan to incorporate bow hunting into it, and to use these non-lethal methods to the extent that we can, so that they actually are part and parcel of a five-year plan that begins with those two periods of culling the deer herd through sharpshooting.
Did they indicate that they'd be categorically opposed to five years of sharpshooting? Because...
That's what we asked twice, and that's what they said no to twice.
I think the odds of getting this plan approved are pretty low, because there's nothing except sharpshooting in it.
Well, it doesn't make sense either, really.
Well, I agree. I agree. Four years of non-lethal methods, we're going to be right back to the levels that we're at now, you know, or higher. I'm concerned, I'm concerned about the whole section. I think, as Pauline said, calling it non-lethal deer management, there's, there is, there is no deer management. It is trying to adapt to the deer and protect properties, et cetera, but it is not doing anything to actually control the level of the herd with what's in here.
That's right.
Yeah, and so, while these are all good things, and I, you know, that they're fine to do, they don't control the herd. So, I guess what I would be interested in doing is amending the deer management plan. We have a title, subtitle of sharpshooting in the winter of 2019 to 2020. I would propose that we have the second subtitle be bow hunting in years two through five. So, you could list out each of the winters if you want to, to make it very specific. And then, and I don't, I know I'm being a little bit general in my wording right now, I just want to get the point across. I don't know if within this, and Sue, probably you can help us with this, if we need to, or Jody, if we need to put any more detail in this proposal at this point in time, other than that we would do the bow hunting in those seasons. And then, I would retitle what would now be the third subtitle, and I would not call it non-lethal deer management activities. I would, coping mechanisms. I don't mean to be, it's, they're not deer management. I totally agree with Pauline. And I would entertain a different title for that, if we're going to keep it in here as part of the plan.
Non-lethal deer-related activities.
That, yeah.
And with regard to the second point, can you read your title again, please? I mean, very quickly.
I didn't write anything down, so I can't read it. I'll try and, the second title, I would say, bow hunting in years...
Years two through five.
Two through five, or if the attorney's office feels it's more appropriate, being similar to the first title, say, bow hunting in the winters of 20-21, 21-22, 22-23, et cetera.
What I was going to suggest is, basically... Here's what I was going to suggest is basically bow hunting in those winter, the winters of those years as necessary to keep the deer population at the desired density.
I would be fine with that.
So that would leave it open that maybe we would not have to do bow hunting in any particular season or any particular year.
I would be fine with that. That sounds good.
I would suggest, it was my understanding again, that in April, we would go to the July meeting without a plan submitted, have conversation, councilors, come back and have discussion.
I understood we were going to take a plan with us.
Okay, and that's fine. I didn't understand that.
Does that sound like something staff can put together in a time we fashion? Okay, you want to, I think Susan stated what she wants and is recommending very clearly. So would you just make a motion to amend the plan in the manner you just expressed?
Yeah, I move that we amend the deer management plan per our immediately prior discussions, basically adding a second subtitle that will address bow hunting in the years two through five, if necessary, to maintain the desired population. And that we would retitle the third subtitle to be something like non-lethal deer, what did you say, Jim?
Litigation.
Non-lethal deer-related activities.
Yeah, deer-related activities. I'm flexible on that, but not deer management because it is not deer management.
Okay, so there's a motion on the floor, second?
Second.
Second by Cole, discussion.
Let me be first to say, I don't like the idea of bow hunting. And like I said, I'm flipping 180, but I just, I think we have to get something approved by the NRC.
Doesn't matter what you or I or anyone else here likes or dislikes, we need the commission's approval.
I agree.
I guess I've not talked to the commission, and so that's what I want to do first. So I appreciate, you know, the desire to, you know, definitely use the tools which they have, you know, given us, which is bow hunting. That's unfortunate. So I'm not going to vote in favor.
Sure, fair enough. Any further discussion? Hearing on roll call, please.
Taylor?
Yes.
Teague?
No.
Thomas?
Yes.
Throgmorton?
Yes.
Cole?
Yes.
Mims?
Yes.
Motion carries five to one, or four, yeah, that's right, five to one. So now we need a motion on the amended resolution? No, we're okay.
No.
Good deal. All right, could I have a motion to accept correspondence, please?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Cole, second by Mims. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item 17, announcement of vacancies previous. We have one vacancy to fill an unexpired term effective upon appointment to the Housing and Community Development Commission. Applications for that position must be received by 5:00 PM Tuesday, July 9, 2019. We have one vacancy to fill a four-year term on the Airport Commission, and one vacancy to fill a three-year term on the Telecommunications Commission. Applications for those positions must be received by 5:00 PM Tuesday, June 25, 2019. We also have one vacancy to fill a five-year term on the Airport Zoning Board of Adjustment, and one vacancy to fill a three-year term on the Historic Preservation Commission for the East College Street District. And those vacancies will remain open until filled. Item 19, city council information. So could we please start with Bruce and move to the right?
Okay. So there was one thing that I wanted to mention. So this is Pride Month, and last week was Pride in Iowa City, and so that was lots of events that people were able to attend. This was the largest Pride parade ever.
It was a big deal.
And Pride in Iowa City has been going on for 49 years. So next year is the big 50th year. I was able to go to Film Scene because they had Stonewall, but when I got there, all the tickets were already, they were free, but it was all booked up. So that's good for Film Scene. It was not good for me to miss it, but, so, other than that, this Saturday, as the mayor mentioned, is going to be Juneteenth, and that's going to be taking place at Mercer Park, so I do encourage people to come out. That's all.
Good deal. I'll just mention, on the 26th, the downtown district will have a State of the Downtown in the alley space behind Discerning Eye at 5:00 PM.
All right, Susan?
Attended a meeting last night at Mercer Park, a community meeting, and I want to thank Captain Brotherton, and I can't remember the officer's name that was there. I know it was Adam, but I didn't get his last name.
Schmerbach.
Yeah. And Jeff was there, and there was a number of other city staff members from Parks and Rec. I know Ron Kentucky was there. This was related to the recent shootings around Mercer Park and other shootings in the area. I just want to commend staff for putting this together very quickly to listen to and hear the concerns of the residents about the safety in their neighborhood at a destination park in our city where we have ballparks and lots of kids. I know that in some cases, they didn't necessarily get the answers they wanted, and part of that is because it's an active investigation. But I think the police were very good at explaining to them why they couldn't give them certain answers and share certain information at this point. I think it was also very much an educational opportunity to explain to people a bit about how the process goes in terms of the investigation that needs to be done and the steps. It also was an opportunity to build some relationships and encourage people to reach out to the police department, to reach out to Parks and Rec or others that might be able to answer questions for them or give them information, and places where they could get mental health care if they needed it for people who maybe experienced trauma that were there. So again, it was, it was a very good meeting. I think, I mean, I think it ended up going almost two hours by the time we got out of there. And just really want to thank Jeff and the rest of the staff for putting something together on very short notice for people. And we may be doing some more things like that, but it was definitely needed. Kind of change of direction, the other thing is downtown block party, I believe it's this Saturday. So encourage everybody between Juneteenth and block party, there'll be plenty of things going on, so hopefully get out and enjoy some good summer weather.
I also did enjoy the Pride Fest events on Saturday. It was after the rain cleared. It didn't seem to dampen people's spirits. There were almost as many people lining the streets for the parade as there is for the homecoming parade, which was really exciting to see. Very colorful and fun, as always. There was one, a group of folks on the corner of, I believe it was Washington and Dubuque, that had signs and were quietly urging people to repent, and there was...
Did you?
Yeah, walked right up to him and repented, but, and then the other group of people who were questioning them, but I was pleased to see, and I thanked them for being there, four or five of our officers were standing around and keeping a watchful eye on the group. And as I chatted with them, they said, you know, it seemed to be just a shouting match between the groups, and that seemed to be what it was. And after about an hour and a half or so, both groups dispersed, and so that was good to see. But again, it didn't seem to dampen anybody's spirits. The party, party went on, so that was fun to see. Coming up Monday, I had in my calendar, Welcome to the Mandela Fellows, which is, they're always a great group to meet and greet, and they're always so happy to be here and wanting to learn things about our community. And that's 5:00 at the Hilton Garden Inn. I believe there's another event the next evening also on Tuesday. Also on Tuesday, at 8:00 in the evening, is Meet the New Nighttime Mayor at Joe's Place. I thought that might be interesting. I don't know, I think his name is Joe Riley. I don't know if any of you have had a chance to meet him, but I think I might try to get a chance to meet with him there and see how things are going. That's all.
One of the great things about the Pride Parade at that intersection of Washington and Dubuque where the protesters were, was that when various people involved in the parade walked by, they often broke into a chant along with the audience, "L-O-V-E", "L-O-V-E". I mean, it was a very effective way of being with people who profoundly disagree with people who were in the parade and so on. So I really admired that a lot. So I mentioned a few things. I had the pleasure of attending the University of Iowa Flood Center's 10th anniversary celebration on the 6th of June. Several people spoke, and I'll tell you, the Flood Center is a great operation, it's known worldwide, and they have done tremendous work, as I indicate, for other parts of the world, but also for the state of Iowa, in really advancing the state of knowledge about how to forecast flood events, how to forecast the extent of flooding, how to give advance notice of imminent flooding and that kind of thing. So Vitek Kariskey, especially, and Larry Weber, who used to head the Flood Center, really deserved a huge amount of praise for that. I didn't hear anybody mention the Longfellow Porch Party. Did I miss that? Somebody might have mentioned it. It's such a great event. A lot of happiness, a lot of terrific music. And Bruce, you're such a singer, you know, you should have been there. I was really disappointed. There was one, basically a rock band of some kind on Clark Street, I think, that had about six people in the band, and they were really hot. They were really good. But also, a high school jazz band on Sheridan. It was so much fun to hear them. And Jean Littlejohn and her folk machine people were sitting out on, I don't know, can't remember which street it was, but they're sitting at a corner, and people kind of stroll by and do their summer kind of thing and hang around for a while and sing things like, you know, "Shine on, shine on, silver moon" or whatever. It was really fun to hear. I also attended the World Refugee Day Dinner. Did I say that right? World Refugee Day Dinner and program at Liberty High on the 15th. It was pretty fun, even though I had to arrive late and depart early. On the 20th, ICAT is sponsoring meetings about opportunity zones in Coralville and in Iowa City. I encourage you to attend, especially the one in Iowa City. I think I'll go to the one about Coralville, too, out of curiosity. And let me think, you mentioned the Mandela Fellows. It's been a great treat to be able to meet with them each time they've come, but I don't know that you mentioned the second one explicitly. They're going to be here from 2:45 to 4:00 PM on the 27th. And just meeting with the mayor and some staff, and I don't know who else, but there'll just be this conversation, and that's always fun to do. And stuff. Jeff?
Nothing.
Ashlyn?
Sue?
Kelly. All right, I think we're done. Could I have a motion to adjourn, please?
I don't know if there's a community comment. I don't know if anybody...
We don't usually ban, no.
Could I have a motion to adjourn, please?
So moved.
Moved by Mims, second by Teague. All in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, motion carries. We are adjourned.